Thank you all for coming tonight. This is the East Line Board of Selectmen Regular Meeting of October 6, 2021. We've had the Pledge of Allegiance already this evening. We'll call the meeting to order and as for any additional agenda and consent items, do you have one?
No, we're just gonna add, once we get down to special appropriation for American Rescue, we can just add it there without an agenda.
Because we're not adding to the agenda, we're adding into that item. We have another addition to the American Rescue Funds. Delegations this evening. Anyone? Delegations? In the back?
Pat Larkin, 14 Oak Hill Drive, Nyhannick. Currently, I'm a member of the Town, Park and Rec Commission, but I'm not here as a Commission Member tonight. I'd like to read a letter to the record, a request that was sent to the Board of Selectmen on January 27 by the Town, Parks and Rec Commission. The East Line Parks and Recreation Commission is recommending to the Board of Selectmen that the town-owned open space, approximately 300 acres located at Darrell Pond, be designated under the control of the Park and Recs Recreation Commission as referenced in the Town Ordinance. The Darrell Pond property is identified in the town's plan of conservation and development for the possible advancement of passive recreation opportunities. This proposed recreational area will provide a unique opportunity for a variety of activities. The Commission has formed a subcommittee led by Todd Donovan to investigate the area for suitable recreation activities. Currently, our park's inventory does not include a dedicated area north of Interstate 95. The Darrell Pond Recreation Area will enhance healthy activities for the community. Thank you for your attention. This letter was dated January 27. Since that letter, there have been 11 regular meetings held, three regular meetings canceled because of lack of agenda or attendance issues, 12 special meetings, and this has not made the agendas. The Committee has collected many ideas from the town folks about what to do, but we can't move forward without Board of Selectmen authorization. So I guess my question to you guys, to the whole board, is why has this request not been acted on since January in any of your subsequent agendas? Thank you. I have a copy of the letter for you all if you'd like it.
We have it. Anyone else? Okay. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 1, 2021.
I'll move to approve the regular meeting minutes of September 1, 2021, as submitted.
Second?
Motion made and seconded. Any comments, corrections? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Let's have it. Mr. Deputy First Select?
I move to approve the special meeting minutes of September 28, 2021, as submitted.
Second?
Motion made and seconded. Any corrections, comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent calendar, please.
Move to approve the consent calendar for the meeting of October 6, 2021, in the amount of $6,181.17.
Second?
Motion made and seconded. Any further comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Great, we'll go right on to new business this evening. The special appropriation of up to $10,000 for a part-time human resources clerk, we had a discussion in the past about human resources and our need for upgrading and professionalizing that department in an industry that has grown quite a bit over the last several years. I'd like to introduce Tracy Santos. Tracy, wave your hand. There you go. And welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming this evening, because this is after your hours. But there were some questions about confidentiality and who we might hire, who your ideal candidate would be. Would they be working with sensitive material, or would this be more of a clerk and aide to you and working, obviously, under your direction? So Tracy, if you could come on up to the podium, that's where you do your business there, and maybe you might have something to say first, and maybe you could explain your need. You've been on the job for maybe two months?
Yes.
Good guess. And, yeah, just about, right?
Yeah, just about.
And you approached me right afterwards and say, oh, we have some work to do.
Yes.
So maybe I can set you up with that.
Sure.
Thank you.
So I don't know if you, I know you discussed my memo of September 1. I don't know if you would like me to read that first before I talk about...
You can at least briefly remind us what it said.
Sure.
Sure.
Yep. So I just, of when I began work here, I realized that there were a lot of things that needed to be done in the Human Resources Office to bring it up to compliance and make it more efficient and effective operation. So I had listed several things, just some of them were updating the personnel files. The I-9 forms are not in compliance, we're working on that. Let's see, streamlining manual processes, automation for payroll and human resources, among other things. So in addition to that, I had requested some assistance to do that because there's a lot of work to be done there. So I kind of did it in two phases for this position. And so Phase 1 would basically be help create the new personnel files, create confidential files, because we don't have them, create personnel files for seasonal staff and other things, like I mentioned, the I-9 forms, creating OSHA forms, going through HR. Basically, Phase 1 is getting everything organized and get the department in working order. And then I had a Phase 2. Once that was done and we were all in compliance, I would, I was hoping that this assistant could provide secretarial and administrative support, such as typing correspondence, appointment letters and such, assist with maintenance of personnel records, employee information such as the personal data benefits and retirement pension, assist with workers' compensation reporting, assist with recruiting and posting positions, and other duties and projects as they come along in the HR department. As far as confidentiality, of course, in the Human Resources Office, pretty much everything is confidential. So yes, we'd need to hire someone with a good level of confidentiality. And that's it.
Right. So thank you.
You're welcome.
So we're looking for maybe up to 20 hours a week for someone in a more mature, you know, someone who can handle that responsibility.
Right.
Maybe some proven responsibility. Are there questions from the board?
Will this appropriation amount cover us through the end of the fiscal year?
It's been calculated by our Finance Director to do just that.
Thank you.
Yes. And again, it's up to 10,000. If we start running out, then the hours won't be there, or we'll go back and review that.
Yeah, a question I would have is, with the 10,000, are we gonna be, we're looking for someone with some experience, looking from what Tracy's given us, you know, establishing confidential files, separating things that have been put in wrong files, is gonna have to have someone with some degree of experience and knowledge of the field. Are we putting aside enough money to get, to make the position attractive enough to the type of person we're gonna need? That's the thing I have some concern about. I'd much rather make sure we're competitive and get the right person than, you know, try to save a few dollars and get the wrong person.
Sorry.
Are we looking for someone from the field or someone with clerical duties here?
Correct.
I mean, do you need someone with a human resource experience necessarily? Or can you take a clerical person and give them specific directions?
Yeah, I would do, I would train them and give them specific directions. I mean, having some HR experience would be great, but for the, especially Phase 1, I mean, especially Phase 2 for that, but Phase 1, it's just basically helping getting everything in order. It's a mess in there.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna lie.
We're starting from scratch, really. We've had some folks help us out with human resource content, but we've never really had an HR Director who is knowledgeable in his or her field, and we're talking about Tracy now, we're lucky to have her, but as a trained professional comes in and realizes all the gaps and the need for improvement, we're gonna try to find that progress. Other questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Hi.
My name's Dan, coming in.
Hi, Dan.
So what, how much time do you think it'll take to bring everything up to standard where it should be? Is the rest of the, are we looking at, how many months is this 10,000 gonna carry us? Or do we know?
Not sure how much the 10,000 is going to carry us, but I know I probably have probably three to six months of work to do. I've been working on it, of course, since I've arrived, but I can only do so much in including, along with my day-to-day operations that I have to do. So it's gonna take some time. And I, in addition to all that, we've, I've been doing some records retention as well. We seem to have everything from the beginning of time, so slowly cleaning that out and, you know, getting everything organized in the office. So three to six months, I would say.
And with that investment in time and effort, would that bring us, do you think, to a point where we would be in compliance, so if we were to be audited in some fashion, or if someone looks to see how we're doing with those records, do you think we would pass muster at that point?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. You were previously employed by another town?
I was.
And how many employees were there that you had to keep track of in that position?
Sure. When I first began in Waterford, I was just strictly HR for the Board of Ed, so that was about 450 employees. And then after, I think, 15 years or so, we merged with the town, so that was another 250 employees. So between 600 and 700 employees. But it wasn't just me, we had a team.
And how many employees total would you be keeping records on for our community?
Sure. I understand that during the entire year, it's about 150 full-time regular employees, but then in the summer months, it goes up to about 250 because of all our seasonal help.
And you're required by law to keep employee records on all of those part-time employees?
Correct.
Seasonal employees, I mean.
That's correct.
Okay. And what was the size of your staff in Waterford?
Sure. So when we were just the Board of Education with about 450, we had a Director, a Specialist, that's what was my position, and we had a Secretary in the office. And then the town had a Director and a Secretary as well. When we merged, we kept the entire staff. So there was, I'm sorry, we merged to one Director, two Specialists, and one Secretary. Yeah. So, yeah.
Okay. So when you applied for this job and took this job, did you realize that it would be you? It's a one-person office?
Yes.
Okay.
At 33 hours. But I did not realize the amount of work needed to be done in that department. I was, you know, I knew you needed automation, and I was very excited to help with that because I've been through several implementations with automation, so I knew I could be an asset for that. And I mean, I could certainly be an asset to all these things too, but I didn't realize I'd have to really establish the department when I got here. I thought it was already established.
I see. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
A question for Anna. The 10,000, how about how many, I calculated for three to six months, up to 20, 240 to 480 hours of someone.
Anna'll have to answer. So the $10,000 is actually based on about 15 hours a week and using a range of salary between $15 and $20 an hour. So it really depends on the type of person that we would be able to hire for the position.
Okay. Is this a position that we would, well, maybe a question for Mark. Is this a position that we plan on continuing, or is this a temporary position to get?
The initial is a contracted temporary position, and that's what I'm suggesting now, and I think in future budgets, there'll be a budget that will be starting to develop in January. I think we'll have a good indication of how this might be helping Human Resources. Some other ideas, you know, we've always talked about a floater in this building. That person might be able to pick up some other hours doing that. We've had some extreme needs, and I'll go over that in my Selectment Report later on tonight. We have some extreme personnel needs with some absences and some emergencies that, you know, having someone who can kind of fill in would also be helpful. So maybe in the future, again, I'm not developing the next budget, maybe in the future, we'll find an opportunity to fold two needs together, which would be a clerical position for HR, but also a floater position for the building.
And I believe we've asked for that position the last two years.
Yeah.
It's been shut down. A Port of Finance. Okay. Thank you. It's nice meeting you.
Nice meeting you.
Welcome to East Line.
Thank you.
So shall we approve this for six months? And then the next board can review it?
I think we have a, we have a motion for the amount of money specified, you know, up to 10,000 for however long.
So however long that would last.
Oh, for however long that is.
And it could be appropriated.
What I would like to do, too, is, I think we need to look, you know, I've looked at other HR departments of towns our size, no one has less than two people.
Right.
On a full-time basis.
Right.
So I think we need to talk about that because I've seen what Tracy does, I mean, she's trying to do all these files, and then other issues pop up that demand her immediate attention and takes her for hours away. That's gonna continue to happen because of the nature of the job. So I think that's something that we need to, you know, look at and make an analysis fairly quickly on that.
Agreed. Agreed.
I think, I think we appropriate up to $10,000 and it lasts however it lasts, maybe not a time period, but as needed, but we're not putting someone on other than part-time. We're not looking to make them full-time and benefit in position and all that. We're looking for temporary, in the contract, the employment contract will be a temporary situation, so they're not expecting to be able to collect unemployment at the end and all that. So that being said, we're appropriating up to $10,000 tonight is what we're asking for, and I think we'll have a, that will at least get us to budget season where, again, the next administration can make an intelligent decision on how this is going, to support Tracy's needs, and the grave need of getting our files in order.
I'll move to approve a special appropriation in the amount of $10,000 from account 01-01-120-100-500. Contingency to account 01-01-106-100-412, part-time clerical HR, to hire temporary assistants and forward to the Board of Finance for approval.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there, is there further comment?
I would only say that, you know, I think it's fortuitous that this problem was identified, and we're doing something in the short term to begin to rectify it, but I agree, I think we have to have a long-term plan so that we can look forward and not get into these situations in the future where people just don't have the time to update files as they should, especially where it's something that's regulated and can be looked at and we can be criticized for. So I'm glad this is happening, but I think we have to look at the bigger picture and have a plan for down the road.
And now we have somebody who goes better.
Yeah.
We were starting with garbage, you know, garbage in, garbage out, now we have good stuff going in, and now our product will be much better. Thank you, Tracy, for your, for coming out tonight. Anything else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Letter B, if we, if you, if it doesn't meet opposition, I'd like to put that after F. We had State Representative Cheeseman was going to come and help us with this conversation. I will have that conversation with you tonight and make the suggestion, but we do have some friends from, well, the Historical Society. So if you don't mind, if we could just play a little scramble here and talk to the Historical Society, because I know they brought some members out tonight to talk about a possible museum, and then, and then we'll go back up to C, and then E, and then F, and then back to D, B. Does anyone have any problem with that? Just trying to, I don't, does anyone know what I just said?
Yeah.
Right. So if it's, if it's, if it's okay.
I thought we were band practice, A, C, B.
Oh. B-flat.
Yeah, B-flat.
Same key. Discussion of possible action at the Historical Museum. I know there's some friends here tonight, I see our town historian here in Norm Peck III. Would someone like to come up and explain what your idea is, and we can have a nice discussion about that? Hi, Norm.
Good evening. Thank you very much.
Norm, how long have you been on the zoning commission?
I was there 10 years before you were there.
So 32 years.
Something like that.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Well, again, I'm Norm Peck, President of the East Line Historical Society. Appreciate this time. The society was established in 1897. As I mentioned in a previous presentation here, we're a group of diligent volunteers dedicated to the sharing of history, mainly the history of East Line. We have for years recognized the need for an East Line Museum and Research Center. We have an ever-growing collection of local artifacts in the town hall, in our barn, in attics, in lofts, in the library, at members' homes, hidden from the public eye. Members of our organization have, for the last 20 years, been organizing East Line archives in the East Line Room of the library. Tip of the iceberg example, we are in possession of copies of every Nyhannick news publication, including the negatives of all the photographs from the '50s, '60s, and '70s. And that's a good little history of East Line in itself. This room, the East Line Room, is used so much by other organizations that time spent by our group is very limited. The library itself needs more space, as we all know. We have met with the library regarding working together on projects to develop a museum inclusive of some of these archives with expanded accessibility to the public. There are significant collections that have been gifted to us for the future, and we feel that there is a very good chance of obtaining at least part of the Norris Bull collection of Nahantuck artifacts, held out of sight at the University of Connecticut. Obtaining part of this collection would be big news and would add to our ability to raise money to support this museum project. The most ideal place in town would be the former Flanders Firehouse, now, of course, the Public Safety Building. This fire-resistant, air-conditioned structure offers a great location and is close to being handicapped accessible. For our purposes, it is pretty much move-in ready. At this time, the first floor would be adequate for artifacts. The second floor, if available, would be good for a research center, housing archives, and a shared meeting room. To share history in this way, including offering student visits and participation, would promote an appreciation of local heritage and town pride. History is so important, we feel that this project would be a real asset to our town. We would look forward to meeting with you to develop a potentially long-term lease agreement. Thank you very much for your time and consideration. I'd be glad to try to answer any questions.
Thank you, Norm. Thanks for staying up there, there might be some questions. Are there any?
Yes, of course.
Of course. Our town, our other town historian.
The Thomas Bull, I mean, the Norris Bull collection at Yukon, probably most people in town don't even know about it. But about how many pieces would you estimate are in that collection?
It's massive. It does include not only Nyhannick, it goes with Fairfield County artifacts as well. The Nahantuck stuff was mainly off of Pennsylvania Avenue, Penn Cove, Corey Dock Road area. It would be a tremendous thing to have in town.
I agree. I believe the last time that we were able to get any of the items from the Bull collection was in 1989, when we celebrated the sesquicentennial, and at that point, we were only able to get about one-fifth of the collection, and it took me five months to get approval for that. These are, these are things that probably 95% of the people in our community have never seen, and they're very valuable.
Yep.
The second point that I'd like to make is that unfortunately, many historical items have disappeared. When we have homes that are open to the public, historic homes, things seem to develop legs and disappear. And one of the, probably one of the more precious items is a handmade basket by many non-such, who was the last of the, last surviving of the Nahantucks, and after one open house at the Smith Harris House, the basket was gone. So I think that it's high time that we really took a look at this. I think that building has the appearance of a museum. It's a, it's a, it's a solid structure, and as a people, if we don't know our past and learn from our past, our future is jeopardized. The location is ideal because it's close to Flanders School, the high school. High school students could come over and conduct research there, and actually, so many of the documents have never, have never been transcribed. Several years ago, I had students that worked for an entire year transcribing a four-volume history of Mary Gorton Smith, and it wasn't, you couldn't read it. They spent hours deciphering it because it was an old faded mimeograph copy. There's four volumes of that that exist today, for sale, by the way, the Histor, by the Historical Society. So I, I just think that this is, this is a great opportunity. We, we still will have some materials stored there, I believe, that are necessary for...
Communications.
Communication materials, fiber optics and things that can get removed, but I believe that they could easily use the lower level. So I, I'm, I commend the Historical Society for coming forward with this request, and I think it's, I think it's, it's a building we already have.
Right. Right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Norm, you mentioned this to me a while ago, I was excited back then, I'm excited now. I think it's a, it's a great opportunity for the town and for your, your commission there. The, a couple of questions are, well, the, and the building itself is historic. I mean, it's an old firehouse, right?
From the '40s.
Yeah. So, and this will be open to the public at times?
Yep.
Excellent. And you said it's kind of the way it is right now? You think it's minimum alteration?
We took a look at it, it, minimum, yeah. It's, it's very appropriate.
Okay.
Alarm system, and it's, it's there.
Excellent.
So if the town were, if the town were to give you the lease on the property, would you be coming back for additional funds for any improvements that needed to be made?
That is...
Or is this something the society could handle?
That is not in our mind. We, we are realistically thinking that it's gonna take some time to get the Bull collection, it's gonna take time to get organized. Our volunteers at the Historical Society are pretty loaded up as it is, we're gonna need more volunteers, fundraising, so in no way, we don't see any reason to ask for money. We will ask for a period of time to waive the utility costs for...
That's reasonable.
Certain amount of time.
Yeah.
Well, if we still have that equipment there anyway, we would be paying for that.
Yeah, to explain what, or to my knowledge, what Roseanne is talking about is our, the brains of our communication towers and the radios and all our first responders, our bus drivers, our public works folks use, the brains of all that are, that is still in that building, it will remain in that building. It's also a central fiber optic hub for the state of Connecticut, as we found out when we were building the Public Safety Building. So, you know, from there, it branches to Montville and St. So, you know, from there, it branches to Montville and Salem and other places, and that's a central hub for them. We need to maintain that building's heat and air conditioning, and it's a small, it doesn't take up a lot of room in that building. It's a small closet, if you will, but it still needs to be maintained. It's also, as was pointed out, it's a historic building, but it's also on the property of the school, so an appropriate use of that building would have to be some kind of a municipal or historical function. Certainly, you don't want to turn it into a 7-Eleven or a, or whatever.
Or another dollar store.
Or another dollar store. Costco, Annex. No, we have a school there. We have two schools there, and it's still a municipal campus, and it fits in quite well. But we will be needing to maintain that building and maintain the utilities in that building. So, as you point out, Roseanne, so we can negotiate and work on something together, Norm, if it pleases the Board of Selectmen.
There's certainly no urgency or rush
Yeah.
To physically get into the place.
Right.
We just, we'd like to know if we can come to an agreement, so we'll get moving. So when it comes time to move in, we'll be ahead of the game
Sure.
Or as much into the game as possible.
Sure. Thank you for that. And obviously, we're still using that building, hopefully not much longer, but obviously, no rush, but a plan of action.
Yep.
And it's not on school property. It's its own separate place because when you call it up, it does come up separate.
Yes.
In nineteen forty-seven
Thank you for correcting.
When it was more, born. Bill, same thing, but one of the things, too, is the second floor not only has three rooms that you can use for storage, it has the big conference room, and it also has a kitchen area. And the floor, the first floor, except for that small little area which would be housing the electronics, it would be a large area where they can have display and allow people to come in and utilize it. There's plenty of parking there in the back, the front, and the side for visitors, the proximity to the schools you've done. And right now, Norm, correct if I'm wrong, but people have some of our archives and history in their own homes and attics, which is not a good spot for it because of a whole lot of reasons. So this, and you've been looking for years for a place like this, and I think it's a perfect use of a facility we already have, so.
Thank you.
Hey, Norm, one quick question. Talk to me about handicap accessibility. Is that a minimum to get it up to code for a museum?
We have to take a closer look. Certainly, the entry, if it's not already handicapped accessibly, can be adjusted to be that fairly easily.
The back.
Obviously, upstairs is, like I said, upstairs would be more of a, by appointment only, research center, archives.
Yep.
And the public access would be mainly on the first floor. Have to take a look at the bathroom, but do you recall if that was Liz's big?
I don't remember.
It's close.
Okay.
We'll have our ADA coordinator.
We just wanted to make sure we, yeah, yeah.
I have an ADA coordinator in town, and I'll have him take a look at
Perfect.
The needs for that, and if it makes sense. It might, listen, we might hit a roadblock.
Or it may take some alterations.
Correct.
But we'll, yeah, we should know that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything on this end? Any questions, comments?
I will.
I would, this is a tremendous opportunity to repurpose the building, and the purpose is outstanding. So outside of the financial piece, which I think we've discussed tonight, really getting a feel for what renovations would be required, and then, once we have an understanding of that and the Historical Society's ability and plan to execute those renovations, I think the Board of Selectmen, either today or the new board, should move quickly to work on a lease agreement, at least a memorandum of understanding, so that the Historical Society can then proceed with what they need to do, knowing that we have an agreement for the use of the building.
I'd like to ask Town Council to draw up an MOU for us to consider.
I have a motion.
I'm just making a suggestion.
Yeah, and that's exactly what we're intending to do, is draw up an agreement. You good?
Well, I was just going to say, I comment that, you know, it's really fortuitous that that building is located both near the schools, and I hope if it's, is able to be used as a museum, that there'll be initiatives from the high school and, you know, the middle school and the other schools not far away, really encourage students that have programs where they can really maybe use, if there is a research room, to do research and gain an understanding of our heritage and the history, the rich history of this town, and studies of the indigenous peoples that live here. So I think it's a great use for the building, and I really hope it all works out. My support.
Thank you for cutting out. Is there a motion?
If that, you're done with me?
We got to do a motion first.
A little gift, not a bribe.
Well, we better do the motion first. We should do the motion, so then it won't look like you're bribing us with the motion.
This is Liz dug this up. New on day, March sixteenth, nineteen seventy-four. Old firehouse soon may be torn down.
Oh, boy. There you go. Thank you, Norm.
Thank you, Norm.
But it didn't.
Didn't. I'll resolve that the Board of Selectmen hereby authorizes the First Selectmen to negotiate with the East Lime Historical Society for the use of the old Flanders Firehouse to store and display various historical artifacts and documents.
Second?
Thank you.
And my former history student had better vote for this.
I'll add, she talked about people transcribing stuff digitally. My wife worked for her back in high school, ninety-four, transcribing a diary digitally. Pretty cool stuff.
We have a motion. It's been seconded. Any further comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? It's a unanimous vote, a normal, the clock's ticking, I got sixty days, so let's get busy. Congratulations, and thank you, Historical Society, for coming out tonight and this brilliant idea. Lisa Timothy is here tonight. Could you stand? Lisa runs our library. We all know Lisa. Lisa has had a little bit of a sabbatical with a medical leave for a long time, and I'm glad you're back and your organization, it's a really good sign of an organization that can run without its leader for a period of time, and your organization ran like clockwork and they did great during, oh, during the most difficult time, and I know you're proud of your staff and taking back our heartfelt congratulations and gratitude to them that they did such a marvelous job during the pandemic. They were busy.
Yeah. We've got to spend everything.
But Lisa, there's nothing better than seeing you sit back in your seat. I got to visit you yesterday, and I was like, ah, it's nice to see you back. So, thank you.
Thank you. I just quickly wanted to add that we're working with the Historical Society, that's part of the reason I'm here tonight, that there are a number of grants coming available from the ARPA that would qualify to rehabilitate that building and to set up programs, and we are working with a grant writer to try and set up some capacity building, some strategic planning, and grants that would not cost the town anything, or a small matching amount that would be able to go ahead and plan and figure things out. So we're working on getting some of that money that's coming out of Washington to use.
Grants aren't easy to get, but I know you'll work hard at that. And every time you say the grant word, it's like Christmas morning around here. We love that.
We've got a list of them. I'm working with a grant writer from Mystic Seaport Museum who's been successful, so.
Lovely.
Okay.
Thank you, and so great to see you again.
Good to see you. Thank you.
And Lisa, thank you for being the caretaker of a lot of the historical items from the Historical Society for many years.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we'll give you some more room back if we get this museum.
Thank you. We're going to now go to C. I think the alphabet soup says go to C. Special appropriation of up to nine thousand dollars fee for the removal and storage of vessel abandoned on Cheney Beach, the Lexi Two. Mr. Dagel has some history on this. I'll tell you that it is our obligation as a town, as the harbor master has an obligation through state statutes and the law, to remove abandoned vessels, tow them, et cetera, and store them, and try to get the owner to get that, get the property back, and we've struggled legally with this for quite a while, this arm wrestling with this owner who abandoned his boat and walked away. It's been stored at a facility in town that has charged us by the day in storage and all that. But again, when we pay this, we will then be able to, because then when there's an expense, be able to lien the properties of this person, but we can't just get him to pay. So now we're forced into this position. Paul, do you want to fill in the blanks?
Yeah, just a little recap of what took place. The boat was abandoned. East Lime Police were contacted. They brought the boat and anchored it in Niatic Bay. It broke away from that anchor and was, I don't believe it was beached the first time. So the police again towed it and anchored it in Niatic Bay, and it broke free again, and it came upon the beach at Cheney Park. And at that time, the harbor master was notified of the problem, was not initially notified of the problem, and due to the concerns of environmental concerns of what would happen if that boat started to break apart, he, through his authority, had the boat towed and removed from the water by a local Marker Seven company. I previously discussed at one of our past meetings that there's some lessons learned here. The harbor master probably should have been contacted first before it was brought out into the bay. Could have been a more secure location to bring it while it was still afloat into the river, so there should be some, you know, better communications going forward so that doesn't happen again. If there's a derelict boat, the harbor master's the right person to contact to assess what options we have to address that boat. But needless to say, what happened has happened, and I think it's prudent upon the town to reimburse the local merchant who came to the town's aid to prevent an environmental hazard from occurring in our bay. So that's a quick history of it. I know, Mark, you've worked with town legal representation and the merchant and
And the harbor master.
The harbor master as well. So I think this is imperative upon the town. The harbor master has that authority to take action. Obviously, in a perfect situation, and we don't have time to go through the normal appropriation process when we have something like that that's proposing a risk to the community, so I think it's the right thing to do to reimburse Marker Seven for the service they provided to the town. And going forward, we should, we should ensure that when these things occur in the past, there's better communications and decisions are made that could have avoided this expense, not saying it would have, but may have. But needless to say, we protected our, one of our town resources, and it's, I think, incumbent upon us to reimburse the Marker Seven for the services that they provided to the town.
So this amount is, thank you, Mr. Dagel, because you are the ex officio, and you sit through a lot of meetings over there on this issue and so many others, and WELSCO as well. Thank you for the update. Again, I want to reiterate, this nine thousand is going to Marker Seven for the storage for the, for all they've done to, you know, remove the boat from dangerous waters and all that, and this money is reimbursable through liens to the person's property, and I understand a business that we will, as we have done several times in the past, this happens about every two years, we will be going after this person to reimburse the town and the taxpayers for these fees. This is not only a thing that the harbor master should do, it's his responsibility, and the law tells him he must do. So this was a responsibility we have to do as a town. It's one of those things. It's kind of like having a dog catcher. It's like, oh, God, we spent a hundred thousand dollars on a dog catcher. Why? You have to. You just have to. It's part of it. Comes with the territory.
He also does a lot, too.
Well, I'm not putting the dog catcher down, but, or the harbor master. I'm just saying, this is part of the thing, and this happens from time to time. People abandon boats on beaches, or they break away from anchor, and they just walk away, and they can't. So that's the situation there. This nine thousand might not be the end. It might be an expense of the actual dismantling of this boat and disposal of this boat. I understand it's not seaworthy. By the picture we have in a packet, I mean, I, what do I know about boats? It looks fine to me, but it is not seaworthy, and it's too far gone, and repair is needed that it needs to be dismantled and disposed of. So there might be some other fees, again, reimbursable by a lien onto the property that this person does own. He is a Connecticut resident, and I understand the business owner as well. So.
I would like to add a couple of things that I didn't mention.
Sure.
The harbor master made many attempts to reach the owner.
That's correct.
Had, was told the owner would come and get the boat. He never showed up, so he came to an end. And additionally, oh, I forgot the second thought. I apologize. Oh, the value. There was a discussion at the harbor master's, at the harbor management, harbor commissions meeting, that there is no salvage value of this vessel. It's not like we can take it, it's on land now, and try and get a hundred dollars for it. It's beyond repair, beyond value, and it does need to be disassembled, destroyed, and disposed of.
You don't take these things apart for parts, I guess, huh? I would think there'd be some value there, but.
See what it does if it got inside.
That's true.
That pretty much destroys everything.
Right. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve a special appropriation of up to nine thousand dollars from account zero-one dash zero-one dash one-twenty dash two-hundred dash five-hundred contingency payable to Marker Seven Marina for removal of a derelict vessel known as Lexi Two, from Cheney Beach pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes Title Fifteen and forward to the Board of Finance for approval.
A second.
We have motion and second. Are there further questions or comments? Okay, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? You remember my first or second year, so six or seven years ago, there was an abandoned boat down on, I guess it's Crescent Beach.
Yep.
It was down there, and we just took it, we took a tractor, what do you got, a backhoe, and just started crushing it and putting the pieces in the dumpster. Next, again, alphabet soup. I think we're going to a special appropriation, American Rescue Plan, funding of one million, twenty-four thousand dollars. We want to add ninety-nine, Karen, is it ninety-nine thousand dollars, Karen Galvez?
Yes, let's see. Ninety-nine, five, forty-seven, eighty-five.
And don't forget the eighty-five cents. So ninety-nine, five, forty-seven, eighty-five for, and we want to call that what? For the electronic?
Uploading of land records.
Digitizing?
Yeah, digitizing.
Land records.
It's not just land records, it's, okay.
It's just land.
Okay.
We will get to that. Let's start with the water and sewer at the top, nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I don't know if you all met Brad North. He is now our utilities engineer, water and sewer utilities engineer. Ben took over from Brad Cargill. As you know, he retired long-term service to our community, and Ben is stellar, and he's been on the job for quite a while and learning in a mentor role with Brad. We want to suck out as much information from Brad's head as possible, and Brad, you're already, Ben, you're already doing a great job. The Water and Sewer Commission met to talk about the American Rescue Funds, and we all know that very specifically, water and sewer and broadband was specific in the American Rescue Funds as eligible, any upgrading, any aging infrastructure. They met and they've decided on four projects, but of course, that's a big price tag, so we're forwarding one, their top priority, to you this evening, and Joe, you're ready and poised and ready to go, so I'll let you go.
Yeah. Mr. Nickerson was going over some of the, I was just going to lead in, and then, as he said, for those that might not know, I'm Joe Bregault, I'm the Director of Public Works. I oversee the highway and so that, but for some, I also oversee the Water and Sewer Department. So I'm here on behalf of the Water and Sewer Commission, as Mr. Nickerson was saying on that project. that project. Ben North is our utility engineer. So just August 24th, the Water and Sewer Commission meeting a few months ago, they started hearing, oh, well, a lot of the different boards and people are putting in money for the American Rescue Fund and there's stuff on the water sewer side that could be eligible. So they, we want, so they tasked the staff to put together a list of priorities of some of the projects. The only problem, and I always say this in the Water and Sewer meetings, the unfortunate side of the water sewers, every kind of project, you always have to add a zero on water sewer projects as they cost so much. So although I know tonight some items were approved earlier and there's been other items, the Water and Sewer Commission didn't want to be positioned to be, okay, you know, three, four months from now, hey, we have some projects and all these, they keep saying. So that's what we did. The problem, as I said, our projects are bigger projects. They're not smaller 10,000, 20,000. So the number, the $920,000 is a lot of money. We totally understand that. There has to be some bedding. It is a good chunk of the amount, the total amount. So however the Board of Selectment, but what we want to do tonight is try to give you a feel for what this number one project is on the water side. And then we can have a discussion, have some questions, and go from there. So with that being said, I was going to have Ben North kind of go over the specifics of this well five redevelopment, what the need is, and then hopefully we can answer some of your questions, okay? Thank you.
Hi, Ben.
Hello.
Talk to our board.
What are we doing? I'll hand out a lot and give you as I talk along.
Thank you. I'll point out, as Ben's getting ready to speak, that all four of the prioritized in order of projects are in your packet. So just you see that. And we're going to speak to only the first one tonight, the rehabilitation of well number five. Thanks.
Yep. So good evening, everyone. As Joe had mentioned, we're here tonight on behalf of the Water and Sewer Commission looking at the potential projects that could be eligible for American Rescue money. In fact, we strongly believe it would be eligible as DWSRF eligible projects are included in the interim final rule of the American Rescue Plan. That also involves projects that involve mediating failing or aging infrastructure, and we believe this is one of them. What I have here in the packet here, that as you're reading along with me, is a little bit of a history lesson that I actually undertook, just to see how the production of well five has changed over time. Well five was first constructed in 1994. It is up on Wagon Wheel Road, which is in the upper reaches of our aquifer system. It's a pristine water source. And it originally was permitted to produce 780,000 gallons per day. As you can see on the graph on the next page, that number has recently dwindled to about 200,000 gallons a day at its maximum. Just to equate in gallons per minute, that's a well that used to produce 540 gallons per minute, which is now down to about 120 gallons per minute. Typically with these types of wells, we've contracted with a well driller that we've actually used, I think, since the inception of a lot of these wells, S.B. Church. We have tried numerous times to redevelop this well, which at a tune of about $30,000 an instance, was done in 2009, 2013, 2016, and just recently in 2020. So you can see on the graph where this redevelopment usually does work quite well. You can actually see where subsequent years after redevelopment was completed, there would be an increase in yield in the well. Subsequently, though, you're always working against an issue where a typical well will last 20 to 30 years, where you're working against a system that just starts to decrease and deteriorate over time until at which point a new well needs to be drilled. So as you can see on the graph there, the last couple of years, we've seen a steep drop in the production capability of this well, to the point that, you know, we have an infrastructure that's probably about, estimated to be about $5 million that's sitting here that can only produce about 120 gallons a minute. Just to put that in perspective, that's about one-tenth of the daily demand of East Line. So we have six wells in town currently. We did just finish an amazing project with well one and six that allows us to have a huge amount of redundancy in the system. It's improving water quality in town, reducing iron and manganese in town. But this project would increase the capability of us to provide a well to the town that has the lowest levels of sodium in town and also has extremely low iron and manganese as well to benefit water quality and quantity in town. We ask for your consideration and the upgrades that this project is needed and looking forward to any questions or comments.
So Ben, after we do this, we think there's, the number would be, go back up to the 500 gallon per minute?
Yes. We've actually cited two separate areas in the existing sanitary radius of the well, which is required by Department of Public Health, and we've gotten an estimate of 500 to 600 gallons per minute.
That's wonderful.
Yeah.
We, in discussions with you, we talked about a new well could cost up to 10, 12 million dollars.
Correct.
With the piping and the pressure and maybe a tower that would be needed and all that. So this is a good value at $900,000 to triple the output, its current output, by cleaning it out and recalibrating it or reconstructing it?
Yeah, yeah. I should say that there are a couple of pieces to this. You know, a part of it is drilling the well, bringing the well to the existing treatment building. But the second piece of it is upgrading the treatment building, rehabilitating the pressure filters that remove iron and manganese. And that's a pretty big chunk all in itself. So that's about $400,000 worth of what this project is. So not only are we talking, and that's included in this proposal. So not only are we talking about a new well, but we're talking about upgrading this treatment facility and giving it a life expectancy for another 20 years.
The quality of the water, not just the water itself.
Exactly. Yep.
Ken, you have another question?
Yeah. Ben, I know, I talked to you about this the one time you were around the 750. What brought it up to the 920?
So we had, we actually got some better pricing. A lot of the pricing that we had was older pricing that was pre-COVID. We just finished a similar project with well one and six, which is a DWSRF project, prevailing wage, and all the other requirements that go along with a state-funded project. And, you know, we had to sharpen our pencil and we realized that this was going to be more expensive. Matter of fact, when I was in the early conversations with our well driller, he said, if you can get approval to get just the well casing, you can save money on steel. That's literally how quickly steel prices are changing right now based on the lack of availability.
Thank you.
Yep.
Two more questions. So this 920,000, that covers everything on that list that needs to be done to rehab well five.
Yes. And we're going to self-perform it as well. So we're not hiring a general contractor. We would be self-performing the work, hiring subcontractors, and that's how we believe we'd save money.
But that'll be the complete project. These other projects below, these are separate projects?
Correct. Separate projects entirely. Yep.
And you said there's an advantage of doing it sooner rather than later because of the cost of steel?
Yes. And as a matter of fact, we've started the preliminary application with DPH. There is a six-month window that they would allow us to do this until they would, at such a point, revoke our application. That's not to say that we couldn't reapply at a later date, but we have until March 27th to make a decision if we're going to drill this well or not.
Now, and I don't know if you have the answer to this, or maybe Joe will if you don't, but last week there was a presentation on Hathaway Farm property and talking about protecting that because it's over an aquifer. What's the relationship of well five to that aquifer?
So well five is in that same aquifer. It would, I would assume, be another pristine source of water. My only reservation is that we would need to talk to DEP and concern with what the withdrawal limits would be considering that it's in the same aquifer as well five is already in. Well five has stream flow permit restrictions, so at certain times of the year, we actually have to shut the well off due to low stream flow. So I would expect if there were to be a well that were drilled in that area, we would be under the same conditions and we would actually be competing with a current well that we already have.
So to put a new well in that, if we did end up with that property, the Hathaway property, it might be 10 million bucks to put a well in up there?
Yeah, 10 to 15, somewhere in there.
And this would allow us to tap into that same aquifer?
Exactly.
Thank you.
Yep.
It was described to me as putting another well on the same aquifer is like putting two straws in the same glass.
Yeah.
There's only one source of water and we're already drawing from that.
Sure. And it's not to say the DEP may have a different consideration, but that would be my number one concern, is to stand here and tell you this would be the best thing ever and then realize it's not. You know, we'd have to move carefully on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes. So if this were to be approved by us and then forwarded to the Board of Finance and approved by them, what would we be looking at for construction time?
So I'd like to say that we could get it done in three months. I already have talked to the well driller. He's available in January. Because we now have the well one and six project completed, we can actually start to rehab these filters even earlier than that. We've already talked to subcontractors who would be ready to start in a matter of weeks. So, you know, typically what that involves, you know, and these pressure filters are kind of the biggest piece that's inside the well building itself, and that all has to be done, obviously, while the well is offline. We need to take out all the media that's in it. It's green sand filtration. We need to take that media out, take the carbon out, put in new carbon, new media. Before we do that, we need to sandblast the inside, paint the inside of the filter vessels, test them, make sure that they don't have any VOCs and that they be accepted by Connecticut Department of Health. And then we put everything back together again. So what I ideally like to do is do it concurrently while the well is being drilled and we're working on the process of abandonment, we go in and we go after the rehabilitation of the filters.
So what happens during the three months for the water supply that would normally come from?
Well, like I said, since it's only about a tenth of the current supply of the system, the winter is the best time to do a project like this, and this would be our window of opportunity. We wouldn't actually need, I mean, it's dwindled in capacity so much right now, we can barely rely on it as it is.
Okay. And there has been a lot of interest for some time over the Hathaway property.
Sure.
So does that property, there are a lot of wetlands on that property, does that feed into well number five?
It does, yes. Yep. Yeah, like I said, it's part of the same aquifer system. It's Wagon Wheel Road to Pelosi, if you're familiar, up in the upper pat area. We were actually about 200 feet from the Patagonia Lake, on the southern end there. Yeah. It's a great spot for a well.
So now, once, so once this well number five was completed, which you said roughly three months, and you're quite confident that the materials are available, we hear about so much backlog now. I mean, whoever thought there was going to be a shortage of pumpkins?
Yeah.
Wait, does it is?
Yep.
Yes, you better get it soon.
To my knowledge, there hasn't been a run on well pumps, although, you know, obviously I understand there's probably a lot of communities that are looking to upgrade their water and sewer infrastructure at this point, but as of right now, I've not heard of any significant delays.
To follow on her questions, so the well will be out of service for about three months?
Yep.
You don't, you think we have enough capacity, we don't have to purchase New London water or anything like that?
So typically during the winter months is actually when we're sending water to New London. So no, I wouldn't anticipate it.
Are we still going to be able to send them the water that we use in the summer?
Yeah. Yeah, matter of fact, we, if we're not close to it, we will be in the next week or so of sending our allotment to New London this year. And then we anticipate actually starting early to try to get that, a jump on it so that we can send back the allotment that we need to.
Okay. And how far from the current well is this going to be, Joe?
So about 40 feet.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you have a little infrastructure and that's why we're getting a good deal?
Exactly, yeah. It's a tight, it's a tight piece of land there. We're actually right up against the 200-foot sanitary radius, but we do have enough room there and it would be well line through to get a new well in.
What happens to the old well?
It would be abandoned.
Okay.
That's actually part of the requirement of the suitability application.
So is anything removed from it or just?
Essentially, it's just decommissioned. The pump and the motor are pulled and then the top is capped.
Okay.
Yep. And I should add too that typically what we would do in this type of situation is have a precast building and put the well inside of it, controls and switch gear and that sort of thing. This is a much more cost-effective approach with using a submersible well pump. So we're hoping to get some cost savings by doing it that way as well. And that's a typical approach. It's not something that was done 20, 30 years ago, but it's much more common now.
I think that we have a very efficient water and sewer system in our town. And in talking with people who live in neighboring communities, they're paying far more in rates. So I think we operate very efficiently, and this certainly sounds like it would add to the efficiency and be a benefit to, we have now 60% of our town that has access to water and sewer.
Yeah, yeah. We think we have about 6,500 metered accounts and we figure, you know, two to three people per account. So we would easily estimate, you know, 12,000 to 15,000.
The availability of water, just to your point, is it might be serving that percentage, but the availability of water to our commercial and industrial properties which support our tax base that is non-residential helps us out as well.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions?
This requires a permit?
Yes, we've already started that process. Yep.
Does the permit require a design submittal as part of the permit?
Because the main focus of it is just the submersible well, I'm going to, I'm actually in talks with DEP about that right now. I do anticipate on doing a design with them, but we have the ability to do that in-house as well.
So it'll be done in-house?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, really, the only thing that we're designing is running a pipe 40 feet away into the treatment building. It's pretty straightforward.
And these cost estimates are rough order of magnitude cost estimates based on verbal conversations with the subcontractors?
Yes.
Okay. And will the, and this probably is a question for Ann, or will the purchasing policy we have require us to go get multiple bids or based on the, what I understand to be an urgency to get this, if we're going to approve it, to get it done in the winter months during low-rate production? Would that require an exception, which the purchasing policy allows us to have?
How does water and sewer work with that? I mean, there's a lot of single-source providers and that's the issue.
And, you know, certain things, we've already talked to a couple of different vendors to make sure we get the best price. We're using some of the estimates, like I said, from the work that was just done at well six, which was done under a competitive bid process. But concerning the well itself, there's really only a few well companies out there that do these types of gravel-packed wells with the auger equipment necessary for this type of work, and that's Stephen B. Church Company.
My concern probably is more with the $400,000 for the filter.
Yeah, yep.
Are we going to get, are we planning on getting competitive bids? You may not know the answer to this. And my concern is not getting them or getting, or taking an exception. My concern would be, is it going to delay our ability to get the work done if approved at the right time of the year? So it's something to consider as we, if we move forward with this, is how we're going to go get this work under contract.
Yeah.
And we certainly need hard sealed bids because, as you know, you may not know, but on the last project, after we approved the dollar amount, when we went out the bid, it came back in at a much higher price. And we don't want to have to revisit it unless we have to. So just something, I know Joe's familiar with that as well. So just some things to consider if this is approved, to make sure we're ready to go execute it and have all the ducks in a row and we don't run into a problem.
Certainly.
I have another question.
Sure.
You used the term low-rate production, and what is that and how does that factor into when and how we do this?
You mean low-rate well production?
Yeah.
So like I was alluding to before, typically we go into a lower period of production, starting around now and extending up until, let's say, about March, April period. And that's the time duration that we usually try to send water to New London as well to make up for our quota, to get water from them in the summertime. But as I said before, because, you know, we have... But as I said before, because, you know, we have six wells in town, all of them are producing more than this well is currently, it's only accounting for about 10% of our summertime demand. In the winter demand, it would be, it would be even less, so I don't consider that to be a huge source of an issue. I mean, we just went the better part of a year without our best-producing wells in town, and it was certainly a struggle, but we were able to get through it.
So is there an advantage to drilling sooner rather than later?
Oh, yes, yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Ben? We're not taking separate motions, so we can move. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
I would just like to add, before we lose the topic, that when we we first learned of the American Rescue Funds being available, this was one of our top priorities, was water and sewer. We knew that right away because we knew that this would qualify because of infrastructure improvements. So I'm happy to see this in the next round of funds to be approved from the from the relief funds.
Ben, Ben and his team and the Water and Sewer Commission have worked very hard on this list to really prioritize. They have an aging infrastructure, and if you let them, if you gave them a blank check, they find plenty of projects that are needed, that are ongoing, and this is, this is the top priority. Thank you. As you can see, we're in very good hands, and our succession plan, designed by Mr. Braga a couple of years ago, has paid off. We got a great guy in the in the job, and you speak with authority, Ben, and thank you for your testimony tonight.
Thank you.
I've never seen Sue Kumro sit still for as long as you have tonight. Sue, part of the Niantic Main Street group, Dan, Rita, Terry, thank you all for coming. Be patient. You're up next. We want to talk about Niantic Main Street. I think you have a bit of a presentation, and you certainly gave me your wish list.
Yeah.
And let's hear about it, and I I know the Board of Select is going to have some questions for you, which is a good thing. Means we're interested.
I like it more.
Yeah.
Yep, she's up and running.
Thank you. Nice job with the Oyster Fest. Nice job with the Oyster Fest.
Thank you.
Are you prepared for an audiovisual extravaganza?
We are. High-tech.
Hey Rita, do you want to be my flipper?
Oh, boy.
No one can draw the lead, but that's okay.
So you mentioned a few of the board members. You missed Jim Cappuccino, he's in the background there. He's one of our members at large. Sage advice. My name's Dan Walsh, I'm president of Niantic Main Street.
Dan, you're going to have to stay by the mic over there?
Will do.
Please.
That's the Sharette study. Take a gander at that.
So thank you for allowing us to come in and and talk a little bit about what Niantic Main Street has done and can do with the funds that we're looking to get through this process. First of all, I appreciate all the work you guys do, being a volunteer myself, and as our Main Street members do, it's not easy being away from home, spending all the time you do, so I appreciate that. So let me turn this towards me a little bit so I can see it. So I want to start with a little bit of background on who we are, who we work with, what we do, and what we hope to achieve with the funds we're requesting. So Niantic Main Street is a nonprofit organization of 100% volunteers. We are recruited, or we come to this this group with time, treasure, or talent, or hopefully a little bit of all that, and we contribute towards making Niantic Main Street a better place to live, work, and play. That's our mission. What do we do? We support large-scale improvements. We work closely with maintaining our anchor institutions like the Children's Museum and the Miracle League, and we drive economic development. Some of the examples of the funds we've contributed to these causes are here, I won't read them, but the amount of money adds up over time, and this is only over the past few months.
Yeah, only because people at home won't be able to see that. Go ahead, I'd go ahead and read it.
Okay.
You know, Mark can't see him over there, so definitely.
Again, this high-tech presentation is failing on many levels. So we've raised $50,000 for the Main Street Park, which was a great success, obviously converting that gas station into something a lot more aesthetic. $22,000 for the Miracle League out in Flanders. $20,000 for the Children's Museum, which has suffered greatly over the past months with COVID-19. We put together with Sue Kumro and many of her friends' help, we fed thousands of people through the Feeding Our Friends program, through the COVID program, or through the COVID times, out of St. Agnes, and we maintain the planners downtown perpetually. So that's what we do. We also work and collaborate with a large number of the local organizations, obviously East Slimes Parks and Rec, Alliance Club, The Giving Garden, the Children's Museum, Theater Under the Shell, and the Miracle League of Southeastern Connecticut. And we conduct a bunch of events that, to your point, Mark, put feet on the street, and that's what it's all about. Farmer's Market, both during the summer months and the winter months, the Holiday Stroll, we do the Boardwalk 5K, the Restaurant Week, the Vintage Market, we can go on here, Bargains by the Bay, and the merchant meetings, which help obviously keep our merchants involved and engaged. We also just did a revamp of our website, which used to be Discovery Slime, we're rebranding it as the Niantic Main Street website, but that took a lot of effort, time, and it's helped us to recruit people from other parts of the state. Yeah, that could come right off. So what's our request? We're requesting $200,000 over a two-year period to do the following five items. First of all, we're going to reengage the Yale School of Urban Development and Design. This was the template, I think it's being passed around back there, the Sharette study. The Sharette study was conducted back in 1997. What that study did was lay out basically a blueprint for success here in Niantic, Andy Slime, and we have consciously and subconsciously, I think, been ticking off many of those projects. Some of them were the foundation of this organization, the Niantic Main Street organization, that hadn't been in the works prior to that Sharette study. So as you drive down Niantic, you'll see favors and lights and great streetscape. That was a Niantic Main Street project achieved through the STEEP grants back prior to my getting involved. The Niantic Main Street Park, I mentioned we raised money for that, that was on the list. Changed that gas station into a park, make it more aesthetically pleasing. Streetscape, I mentioned. The ban shell was on that list, traffic slowing measures, and events and businesses drawn to town in order to celebrate our recreational waterfront location and our sense of place as a seaside village. So that's our first project. We're going to get a study done so we can revisit what do the next 25 years look like? Next, we're going to enhance the arts. We're going to engage local artists with the cooperation and coordination of our our good relationships with our businesses downtown. We're going to do murals and sculptures. We're going to make Niantic Main Street even more aesthetically beautiful and more a destination for tourists. We're going to revitalize Liberty Green. Much-needed work to be done there. We would explore opportunities to enhance that green for holiday events. We're also going to spend time and effort and money on enhancing the northern part of our town. We've already approached the Urban Yale School of Urban Development to give us some drawings on how Flanders could look a little more appealing, a little more accessible, a little more like maybe our downtown does. And we're going to improve wayfinding. There's some $9.8 billion in annual spending from visitors throughout Connecticut, and many of them travel up and down I-95. We need to capture that group and get them into Niantic shops, stores, and walking our streets. So we think we have a history of success in taking money and turning it into success for our town. We have a great group of volunteers, and I'd be happy to take any questions specifically about our project and our future plans.
Dan, that was a great, great introduction. We've met several times on this. It can't be overstated how important Niantic Main Street, the group, is to the Renaissance of Niantic, and it truly has been a Renaissance. I came on board in 1999, I was handed the Sharette as a zoning guy, and 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 here we go, and we launched, and and we sure did. And and Niantic Main Street in its different forms, there's a lot of Candy Shapiro back then. God bless her, you know, it was a lot of personal determination, and then look what we've grown to, and and no less determination. You guys are incredible. You are the reason we have a business community down here thriving in difficult ti, at difficult economic times. So thank you for your service to our town and what you've done, and there's a love affair in this town with with our town and specifically with our business community and what we're doing down there, the Boardwalk 5K that's coming up and the Vintage Market that's coming up. I heard Roseanne just talking about the Oyster Fest that just happened. I know it wasn't necessarily a project, but you're always involved. Thank you very much, and I I want to point out a few things. One is that there's a, there's a, there's momentum among the towns to spend 1% of our COVID money, of our ARP money, on the arts, and this is a nice way to check that box, but also know that it's going, it's going to be done efficiently, with not a lot of overhead, but also in a way that we're also going to be putting feet on the street. You and I talk, and we, it's been my theme when I'm talking about how to spend some of our ARP money, that I want the Board of Select to hear this, that we, I really didn't think when we were handed this money that we should be creating grant programs for businesses to specifically apply, and, you know, I had to close my restaurant, I had to close my shop or whatever, and I need $25,000. That money's out there under PPP and all these other programs.
Right.
I thought it was very important to use this money to put feet on the street, to give reasons for people to come back to Niantic, stay in Niantic, and make plans around Niantic. And not, when I say Niantic Main Street, your organization's committed to Flanders as much as anywhere else in town, and while we have this, this great little fishing village down here, this great little seaside village, we also are very interested in all businesses in town, especially coming down Flanders Road, right through Flanders Four Corners. So I'm glad that that's on there as well. It's an excellent presentation, you checked all the boxes, but I think this Yale Sharette that we've talked about, what'd you say, 1997?
Yeah, it's been 25 years now.
25 years ago.
It's crazy.
Coming up. It's time for a rebirth of that. It's time to say, what's the next 25 years going to look like? You know, what do we need? What's the, what's, we need the experts around the table. We need to be picking the brains of people in town, and that's what the Sharette does. So I I applaud you and your group on that, first of all. Enhancing the arts checks that box, and all your other things are great as well. So thank you for this.
Even the flip chart?
I'm reading. A plus, A plus, A minus.
Very affordable presentation.
Yeah, well, keeping it within budget.
Within budget, for sure.
Other questions for Dan and his team?
Yeah, a few questions. Sue, I talked to you today, you said you're meeting with the Yale people this coming week for the Sharette study?
Wednesday, yeah, Wednesday, the 13th, yeah.
So you obviously, you have more firm, shortly a more firm idea of what the cost will be?
Yeah, we've had a couple of conference calls, and and they want to actually revisit the town and and see what the kind of scope we're talking about here, but they were impressed, just as an aside, at how we've kind of systematically worked through this list and what they can then bring to the table now moving forward. I mean, I'm really looking forward to that.
Okay.
No doubt.
Yeah, and and looking what you have down there for the traffic slowing measures, the ban shell, all those other things, obviously, you know, it'd be hard not to support them. The arts is, you know, an area where a lot of emphasis is in place, so I'm very comfortable with that. Revitalizing Liberty Green, would that, you'd be reaching out to the veterans as well because that sort of, you know, they maintain a lot of the, yeah, because, yeah, because I know I, you know, they just redid the.
Yeah, the monument there.
Monument last year, they have the bricks down there, so I'm sure they would love to work with you on that, Joe. I'm sure they'd love to.
No, I've been talking to Bob about that, and what we can do down there, we have to be very sensitive to the existing memorials.
Right.
Just so you know, Bill Cattrell, that was his number one thing, that we revitalize the green.
Okay.
The grass is in bad shape, it just gets a lot of traffic, but I kind of promised him that we would try.
And the northeast, the northern East Slime aesthetic appeal, you know, it's obvious you've reached out, we had the ribbon cutting at Paw Print, Paw Print Pantry this week. I almost said Paw Patrol because I have a grandson that watches that all the time. Almost came out, but it didn't. But that's, you know, a great idea too, especially up at the northern end. It's, the northern end will never be Main Street because you're not going to have breakfast at the shack and try and walk across the street to get something at the donut shop because that's four lanes of traffic and it's a major intersection. Improve wayfinding, I love that. I mean, coming from the north end of town down here during the summer, I think we already have enough people coming down the road, but I understand what you're, you know, there, but I'd love to see that. So the only thing I would think is you've asked for 100, 200,000 over a couple of years, maybe we could break that down over, because we've only got the first 2.7 now, and we'll get the next probably in June of next year, so probably break it off to so much now and so much later, we could easily work that out, so. And, you know, going back to, I remember there was a magazine article a couple of years ago, I think it was in 2018 or so, Niantic was given the sixth best Main Street in Connecticut, and it was called The Hidden Gem, and it's, I know the work you all do down there, and you don't get a lot of financial support from the town, it's all done on your own, and I see you out there watering, Sue, I've seen you out there with a machine watering, so, yeah, it's a great resource, and I love having you trying to make it even better.
We have a great team, we enjoy it.
Thank you, Kevin. You'll notice on your agenda, it does say 100,000, and my suggestion would be to bite, take two bites of this apple, is to give 100,000 to get your your program going. You decide the order of what you take it, the next Board of Select when, seize the progress you're making, realizes we need to still, need to still support and enhance the business climate and the community, and then we come back in the second half. That was the suggestion as we ease into this, but we definitely, it's very important, I think this is an immediate need, is to enhance the business economic support in this town. One of, that's one of the key pillars of the ARP funding, is business support. Mark?
So I love, I love this. At Yale Sharette, where we, when I got in zoning too, we looked through that, and we go through it, we hit almost all of them, which is pretty impressive. The way, you guys, somebody gave a brief, I don't know, five years ago about wayfinding, and it was really, really interesting that some of the signage we have out there is pretty poor. So I think that's all great. My only comment is, I would, before I, I'm interested in moving someone's far, I'd like to get a little more hard numbers, like I'd like to hear back what 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 the quote, exact quote is from Yale before we we approve some of these expenditures.
Yeah, as you mentioned, they're coming into town next Wednesday, and we'll get a more granular number, obviously, based on the scope we discuss and what sort of opportunities they see.
I'd love to see a ROM, you know, from them, and.
Yep, sure.
I think that's, I'm very in favor of that, but I would just like to see what their number is.
Frankly, I'm curious as well, you know, trying to drill down a little bit with them. They've been sort of hesitant, throw out numbers, not knowing exactly what that, what the project entails.
So we don't really, we don't really know what it is going to be.
No, ballpark was 25, but again, yeah, we can come back and refine that, yep.
I would love to see that, that, the, especially Liberty Green, I'd like to see a little bit more of what you have planned for that, if you have your thoughts.
Right, I think some of that.
If we're going to approve a, you know.
Yeah, I think some of that will come out of the study that Sharette's going to do, but some, something we can glean from the prior study is that it's about attaching that particular park to our new Main Street Park, maybe not physically, but certainly visually, and with more traffic slowing measures on that, on that square. I think, you know, that, there are some challenges there, given it's the state road, but I think we need to work through that, how to make that more the center of town, which is what the study actually envisions, by tying those pieces together. which is what the study actually envisions, by tying those pieces together.
Do you plan on having the Yale charrette give you the study, or do you plan on doing a separate study?
With regards to Liberty Green?
Yeah.
No, that'll be inclusive to this study.
To be inclusive to this study.
Yeah, in fact, that's where we're meeting, that's what I'd say, as a starting point.
Okay, so, I'm kind of leaning towards, I'd like to know what the number is of Yale charrette before we approve it. Um, I'd like to, these other things I think are great, but I would like to see more firm numbers and exactly what we're gonna do before we just allocate it. And we have to, 2026, to allocate this money.
Yeah, we're not going anywhere.
Yeah, we're not going, and hopefully this board and the next board, hopefully the next board doesn't, you know, just spend it up, but I would recommend allocating some money for this, but before we, we, we give it to, I'd like to see some firm numbers, see exactly what we'll do.
Agreed, and we've had a great partnership, um, thank you, Mark, and, um, we hope to continue that, and, and that means, yeah, compromising on these things, and, but we look forward to getting it started, and that starts next week with a study, uh, study starting, so, we'll come back to you.
Excellent, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think everyone realizes the value of our, our Main Street.
Would the charrette, uh, include Flanders?
It would, in fact, I asked them prior to this meeting to send me some mockups of similar areas where there was high traffic, and how do you turn it into more of a pedestrian friendly environment, and if you'd like afterwards, I can show you. They basically, um, showed me presentations from other parts of the state and around the country, and they give you a progressive look at what needs to be done. So, that is a big part of what we want to do, is, is sort of bring the aesthetic improvements we've made down here to our north end.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
I'd like to, uh, move this to our next agenda, uh, so that they have some time to give us some more specifics. I'm not, uh, I'm not opposed, and I think the 100,000 is a fair split, but I think we need to have some more information as to how that would really, uh, be allocated.
Okay, so you're all looking for more specifics, not, um, just, not buckets of money for their board to enhance the arts, or, uh, make improvements to Liberty Green or Flanders, but you want specific numbers.
Remember, all that money comes back to the town, so even what you give us is gonna go back to you, do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Because it's gonna come back in the way of a project, so, um, the money is never gonna be lost to the town.
Right.
And, um, specific things we'll do as we go along, is the Liberty Green, obviously, we can't do anything to the Liberty Green until we dump Joe and, and all those people, so, you know, it's gonna be a lengthy process, but the money will, in fact, come back to the town. None of it's our pay, so it's not gonna go to employees.
Yeah, so, I agree, I just would prefer to wait till we have a little more specifics.
Well, we'll come back with it, sometimes.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's at least get a price tag on the charrette.
Yeah.
I think that's what we're looking for there. The charrette's gonna open up that can of worms of all the other things that it's gonna suggest, and some of those we can take off right away, um, and we'll, we'll, we'll discuss further on how we can tighten up on the, I guess, the detail that they're looking for on that, um, and we can move this, like, we, it wouldn't make any sense to go to October 16th, but we can do on the November 3rd agenda, um, as the Board of Finance has to hear this as well, so it doesn't make sense to do it the next meeting, but, so, we'll give you some time, and we can work together on that, unless there's other opposing opinions.
Will Yale be able to get you a rough order of magnitude by then?
I would imagine.
Okay.
I mean, we've been pushing for it for some time.
Great.
Yeah, just, just to summarize, if you want bank for your buck, I think we're the organization that can make that happen.
Yeah, there's no question about that.
There's a place else for us to go. If we want to enhance the business community, there's no other organization we can, we can go than, than yours. Um, you have a proven track record, you are, you, your momentum is insane, and your future is bright, and we, we want to support you 100%, and we will.
Can I make, uh, just a suggestion? Okay, he's, uh, that said they've been in rough talks with, uh, charrette, and the $25,000 figure was mentioned around, if he's gonna have to wait until the middle of November before it gets, that part gets approved, we'd be willing to at least approve up to $25,000 for the charrette study so that they can at least, you know, move forward with that and get Yale doing that, and then Yale comes back, and then we can at least, uh, you know, have some better ideas later on. Something just to get them started is what I'm thinking with, with the charrette study, 'cause he's already gotten an estimate, you know, a ballpark on that, and it lets him at least be able to tell them when they meet with him, you know, we are moving forward with being able to fund you guys.
More than that.
What?
I think it's, uh, to get things going, it takes a long time. If you want to enhance the arts and start talking about murals and artists and all that to come in on sides of buildings, I mean, give them the money to start moving on this.
Well, I think, I think giving them the $25,000 for the charrette study, then charrette can start moving, we don't have to, you know, wait, you know, it shortens down the time period, we have to wait for them to start their work, and you can get quicker response from them.
Agreed.
Just a suggestion.
Any other comments?
Are these, um, five items in the order of priority as you've listed them, or?
Uh, not really, except for number one should be number one.
Yeah.
So, I, I agree, first of all, I can't add any more accolades to what your organization has done, I consider you a resource as valuable as the natural resources we have in this town for you, but ever to do for the community, so thank you for that. I would be in favor of providing, uh, funding for the charrette study tonight. I would recommend it be 30,000, up to $30,000, it gives me-
I'm good with that.
20% contingency, um, in case the, the ROM estimate comes in high. I think the charrette's, and then with a little more detail for, like, enhancing the arts, I don't need much more detail, and I know you're gonna go out, you're gonna, you're gonna hire artists to produce some art for the town. Liberty Green, I'd like to see a little more, you know, especially this physical link, 'cause you're going across the state road with a physical, that can get you well over 45,000 just by itself, dealing with the state. So, if it's new pavers, new sidewalks, new lawn, those type things, aesthetic things for the current wall we have, you know, and slowing traffic down, good luck doing that without going through the state, and, so, so what would your priority be of the things that you've had listed here-
Mm-hmm.
-under that thing? There's no doubt, you know, Flanders is not aesthetic, it's a, you know, it's a strip mall industrial area, and it's never gonna look like Main Street, but anything to improve it would, would, would help, because it is the main entrance to the, to the town, at least, um, when you're coming down 95 South, uh, so, but I would be in favor of, of letting them, uh, proceed pending Board of Finance approval with the charrette study. It's, it's overdue, um, Main Street, in the 23 years I've been in this town, has just been transformed into a destination, and it's, and it's this legwork of streetscapes that have brought the businesses here, that are bringing the people to town, and, uh, I think it's time, uh, for the future that, that, that gets updated, and to identify not only what potential improvements we can have, but what the priority of those improvements would be, based on the opinion of the, of the Main Street, um, organization, because they've hit it out of the park with just about everything they've instituted so far from the original study.
Thank you. I agree with that, uh, as well, bump it up to $30,000, you'll come back with a solid price, you'll come back with an invoice, in fact, and that's what we'll pay off of, so, you know, that'll work, that'll work, and that'll get us started, and we'll start working on the details and the other things that the, that the Selectmen are looking for.
Did you say 30,000 or 40,000?
Up to 30?
30,000.
Up to 30,000. Up to 30, giving them a little wiggle room on that price.
It's a 20% contingency above the 25, a preferable estimate they've received.
Yeah. Thank you. Is there, are there any other comments or questions? I think it's a good, healthy discussion tonight, and, and the direction we want to go, and, and the support that we're gonna give you. Um, so, thank you all for, for setting the table, and then we'll, we'll carve the roast beast next time, okay? Good, good, and again, you heard it from all of us, thank you for all you do. It's, it's impressive, it's important, and we couldn't do it without you, part of our town, thank you. Dan, go home and make some waffles.
If I could just say, uh, you know, I was just starting my business, my practice, when this came out, a year before, 96, and this came out, and I, you know, downtown all the time, and, uh, I thought, how's this ever gonna happen? And now I look back, and I see how much of it was achieved, and, and I'm really impressed from, I remember looking at this and thinking, ain't gonna happen, and, uh, and, and now look, I mean, there's so many things that, uh, were able to, to be, uh, put forward, and it was only because of the vision that this provided, so, I certainly will support the, a new charrette, so it's a great idea, and we'll figure out the rest later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Karen Share has asked for fourth, well, they've asked for a whole lot of money, we had a lot of-
Sorry, sorry.
Oh, yeah.
They don't put it in the search?
No. Sue says she's gonna put the charrette in the new museum.
Put a copy in there, please.
Very funny comment. The last item, um, on our, well, there's two.
There's two.
Um, the one really quick is $4,000 for Karen Share, they had an extensive list, we individually toured that building, we've individually talked to some members, they are in desperate, immediate need for another freezer. They just had one donated, 2,000 by the Lions, 2,000 by Rotary, it looks like a case, glass, open it up so they can see what food's in there, and all that, they wanted an identical one, they have a freezer that they get repairs on about once every three months. I'm gonna be working with Joe Bogav on a, uh, a plan for generator, Joe, you don't know this yet, but the pumps are right there, the town, the gas pumps, I believe, right behind that, that station, and I don't think those are on generator, Karen Share could use a generator, maybe we can co-share a generator, uh, maybe not, we, we can talk about the engineering of that for that building, so that when the freezers do go out, they do have a generator, but I'd rather not buy two, I'd rather buy one efficient one for that building. But in the meantime, we're not talking about infrastructure improvements tonight, we're talking about a $4,000 freezer that they desperately need, they just got one by, um, again, by Rotary and Lions donating, it was $4,000, they wanted an identical one for $4,000, and I thought that would be something we could get in front of you quickly, and then we start talking about enhancements like generators and some improvements to the flooring in there and all that, we can talk and work with our building, um, because it is a town facility, we'll, we'll, we'll work on that and bring something forward to you in a later date. So, Karen Share, $4,000, are there any questions on that? I don't think there's anyone here from Karen Share. Is there Pat?
We heard, we got a previous presentation, I think that's sufficient.
I told Pat she could stay home tonight, and we had a lot on our plate.
Sounds like a reasonable.
And, uh, I don't know if you saw her on their website, but they have a picture of the, the, um, the freezer, it's sharp, and it's, you know, it's gonna last them a while. And again, if we move them to other quarters, which was talked about at the last meeting, that freezer could come with them, so we're not talking about the, um, improvement to the building facility, but that would be an easy checkbox to check tonight. Lastly, you all asked for, hey, uh, Karen said, uh, we're gonna knock off 10 or 20 years of digitizing our land records, uh, we, she, she takes bites of this big elephant, one bite at a time, and, and we've been going back, and we get grants for some of this and all that, and wiser people than I, sitting at this table, said, well, gee, Chris, if we're doing it, why don't we just do this whole thing? Yeah. Because digitizing is an important thing, it's a, you know, and, and, and does work with COVID in that, you know, if we're working from home, or, or the paper and all that other stuff, and people touching things, so, if we go back to 1839-
Yep.
All the handwritten land records, et cetera, you see it in front of you, or maybe you wrote it down, 99,547 dollars and 85 cents. Karen, you did the homework that I, we, that we all asked you to do.
You did, I had originally asked for 7,500, and, um, you guys had approved it, and, uh, with the, you had asked for the full quote also, though.
Yeah.
And then I went to Board of Finance, they did not approve it, but with the intentions of me getting the full quote as well, and, uh, so, yeah, it came in yesterday morning, so.
But that's doing a century's worth of work.
That is everything, that is indexing 77 land record books, that is, uh, 78 land record books, indexing, um, pulling the images from the microfilm, uploading that micro, the image to our system, plus to US Land Records, uh, yeah, so, there you have it.
And then how would this be accessible to the public?
They just have to go onto US Land Records.
Fully accessible.
Or they can come into our office and print it right off our public term, terminals also.
Fully accessible by the public?
Yeah.
For anywhere in the world.
They're, uh, accessible with a watermark for free, and there is a fee for the public to print it, so.
Who gets the fee?
We, it's $2 a page, and we get a dollar, and the land record company gets a dollar.
Good.
When they come into the office to get a copy of a land record is a dollar, so it's a little more expensive for the convenience, so.
So, I asked Karen, oh, God, 99, I thought 7,500, we might go to 30 or 40, and then we were presented with 99, I said, well, Karen, I mean, nobody's really going back to 1850, right? I mean, uh, you know, you're checking back 20, 50, 100 years, but you're not going back to 18, whatever, well, guess what? People do it all day long.
They do, yeah.
Because they're gonna go chase down-
Right before you asked me that, I had just helped somebody get, uh, land record from volume 27, which was, I believe, well, it was the early 1900s, it was not 1839, but it was, it was old.
Well, even the title search on this, we were just talking about the Hathaway Farm, it was a grant from the king, and, uh, you're gonna be, in that search, you're gonna be looking at those books.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
If we go forward with that, there's, there's an example right there.
Yeah.
Karen, is, uh, is there a way to sort of like, $99,000, you know, we're getting to, you know, 2.7 this year and 2.7 next year, breaking it up, like, going back, is it cheaper to, does it get more expensive when you go back to handwritten and so forth like that?
Yeah, so if you look at the chart, the quote, the handwritten books are actually more expensive, that's volume 1 through 28, and, um, they're all handwritten, and it does cost more for them to index them, so, um, yeah.
If, is it, yeah, I was gonna say, if we, if we did, like, half of it, like, 50, and then, because at some point in time, we're gonna have to do this anyway, and there are resources available-
Yeah.
-to break it up over two years?
Yeah.
Yeah, you've got the quote, so.
I did.
The handwritten documents are about $40,000 of this quote.
Right, but that's only 28 of the books, 28?
What's that, what's that?
Yeah, that's 28 of the books, the rest of them are all typed and are the 45.
It's a higher cost per record.
Yeah.
Dollar, right, not total higher cost.
Yeah.
20% of the aggregate, let's see, um-
Well, it's, you know, about 40% of this quote is, is, is handwritten documents, so we could do, go all the way back on all the typed documents, and then you can pick off, and go back to picking off a couple of years with grants and all that.
When do, uh, we go from typed to, 'cause I remember I looked at something-
Yeah.
-it was from 1922, and it was handwritten.
Right, so, we, uh, the typed books, uh, go back to 1927.
Okay.
And then beyond that, it's, yeah.
But Dan, this is your business, you go back beyond 1927, um-
Not very often.
Not very often.
I, I think of doing the, you know, going back there this year and then next year.
Yeah.
You know, if whoever decides at that time to go back further, do it then.
They can, they can bite at the apple.
I mean, it seems to me if, if you could do all of the, uh, non-handwritten records, uh, what, what would that be, what's the cost of that?
It's 40,000. You get this. So.
It's about 59.
Out of the, again, out of the quote today, the handwritten is 40,500. So if you knock that out, it's.
Right. Maybe that's a reasonable compromise.
About 60 grand tonight.
Yeah, make it 60.
It'll work well.
Say 60, 50, yeah. Do, yeah, we gotta get rid of that penny, the 85 or something like that.
Do the handwritten ones, are they also doing, are they converting it to text, searchable text? Or is it just a literal scan?
I don't think so. What do you mean?
Well, with like, if you scan this, they'll make it searchable text. Right, so the words we stored.
Well, our documents are indexed, so if someone were to come in and search, you know, Joe Smith's, look for their deed back in 1840 after this project, they would find it through the index. They wouldn't actually search a document like that.
So the doc, so the document won't be, so you won't be able to search if I type it for Joe Smith. You still gotta go to the, you have to go manually go to the page.
No, you would go in the index and search it by name.
So is the index all the stuff that's on the paper?
No, but it's by name and address and.
So you didn't, I don't, I'm sorry.
No.
The index would have, you're searching for a deed for somebody.
Mm-hmm.
So that, that index is gonna key you to a volume and page. And then you'll be able to see the image attached to that.
Got it. The image, you still have to transcribe.
It'll be attached in that database.
Yeah.
And the thing about it is, especially with the handwritten, if you were to try to do character recognition conversion, you know, where you're dealing with legal descriptions, where a comma put in a wrong place or a, you know, a double, you know, parent would mean feet instead of inches, you know, when you're doing meets and bounds, you couldn't possibly do that. It would destroy the reliability of those legal descriptions. So that's why you have to use a data, a database where it brings you actually to the.
So that's done on a case-by-case basis, huh?
Well, you have, you have to look at the document itself. So you wouldn't want a computer interpreting the symbols, man.
Okay. Thank you for getting this.
Sorry, I mean.
No problem.
Way of.
Did you, is there only one company that does it? Did you, did you look at multiple companies?
No. This, this company already has the images, because they've been our land record company since before I started. I've been with the town 21 years, and they've been our land record company far before that. So they have actually, they are the company that did the microfilm.
Single source.
That's in Iron Mountain.
Okay, so they have it, so there's an advan, okay.
Yeah. And they don't own it. We own it, but they are the ones that have it, so.
Okay, then there's a section of the purchasing policy for that, when you have cases like that.
Already applied vendor or something like that. We're already using a vendor, not single source, but something like that.
I guess for, you mentioned Kevin, and I would like, you know, I won't be here next year, but I would love to see it all done.
Come in and look up your deed, Mark.
Something we don't have to deal with in the future. It says, open to the future.
Yeah.
So we could just round this to $60,000 if you wanna cut this in to the typed documents only, if it's your pleasure, or it's typed in micro.
I think if we do, I think if we do 60,000, that covers it, and then they'll do, where'd Karen go? Oh, she sat down. It goes up to $60,000, so.
What were you saying, Mr. Diego?
It's, it's typed and filmed. But typed documents and the filmed documents as well.
Right, right. Up to, you know, everything on this list.
Is up to.
Excluding the indexed handwritten documents. So up to $60,000, I think, you know, it's about a $5,000 difference in there, but.
I have one question before we make a motion for discussion. The second page of our handout has the $6,963.45 for shelving. Is, that's not?
No, that's an old email. I didn't know what qualified, so I.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Didn't wanna make a motion and then have to add 7,000 to it. Thank you.
That's the number I have. So I'm adding up, and that's, thank you, Karen. Does there already have the question, any other questions for Karen? It's getting late. I'm adding up what we talked about tonight as $920,000 for water and sewer, 4,000 for Karen Share, oh, let me not jump over the, Niantic Main Street, $30,000 up to, Karen Share, 4,000, and the digitizing, 60,000.
And I have 1,014,000. Anna, is that right?
I agree.
Okay. Well, well, you're the engineer. You're, but you're always off by a few.
No.
So 1,014.
Okay. I'll make the move. Move to approve a special appropriation in the amount of 1,014,000 for the following items, with the source of funds being the American Rescue Funds. $920,000, water and sewer, well five reconstruction. $30,000, Niantic Main Street. $4,000, Karen Share. $60,000, town clerk.
Digitize.
Digitize of land records. And forward to the Board of Finance for approval, and this requires a town meeting.
Sure does.
Second.
It's been seconded. Any further comment? I'll reiterate, as I did the last time we did this, a very, very good, healthy discussion, good interaction. I really enjoyed the process that this, this commission, and this committee of the commission is doing for, for the benefit of the town. Any other comments?
I would just say, I think it was wise that, as much as I support Niantic Main Street, to take a step back a little bit. I agree with the charrette, and then let them come up with other documentation for the balance. And also gives us an opportunity to formulate a plan going up to the future to make sure that all the different groups that may be looking for these monies have an opportunity to weigh in, and so we're fair to everybody. So I think, I think that was a good move tonight, and I think it supports. So at least get some going on their initiative as well. Shows our support.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you. I'll call the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Thank you all. We're gonna go back to B. And I'm sorry that Holly isn't here tonight. She really asked specifically to put this on our agenda. As you know, Holly Cheeseman, our state rep, has been an opponent of the cannabis legalization in the state, and has kept me in the, in the, in the loop on how this is developing from town to town, and what some of the potential issues might be. And I am just asking for the Board of Selectmen to consider a moratorium on any, well, Tracy, thanks for sticking around. Kind of a moratorium on to prohibit the establishment of cannabis, any establishments within the limits of the town for a period of six months. There's a whole lot of towns that are doing this. In the state of Connecticut, I have a list of about 50 towns out of 169 towns that are saying, maybe not, maybe not 50, I have a list of about 30, that are saying, moratorium. Just, just, let's hold on a second. This thing got enacted and very quickly, and while some state, some, the town is receiving a 3% tax, there's also limitations on how I can spend that money. Is it gonna be worth it? And I, we don't typically make zoning or land use decisions based on the income that we'll provide. That's not what their purview is. I do think it would be wise and prudent to pull back and see what happens. I'll remind you that Norm Needleman, the state senator from the Essex area, he's also the first selectman in the town of Essex, famously said, as he voted for the bill to legalize it, he goes, but it won't happen in my town. So, and I'm not saying it won't happen in my town, in our town, but I, I do think that the bill needs to be studied. CCM is pulling, is asking towns to consider pulling back and waiting and seeing what happens with this. There's some concerns, you and I talked about this, that the bill allows for the smoking of cannabis anywhere where smoking is allowed.
Right.
Period. So we already banned smoking on our public beaches and parks, but we allow it on our Main Street. So.
That's one of my biggest concerns, and I don't think we fully understand that, but if, if you cannot drink alcohol on Main Street, are you allowed to smoke cannabis on Main Street? Now, my understanding is the answer is yes. And that's concerning. If we're going to apply alcohol to, no alcohol on our town properties sidewalks, Main Street, talk about Main Street tonight? We're not gonna allow alcohol, but we're gonna allow cannabis. We really need to think that through. I don't know if that's the right decision, Chris.
I'm not proposing a change to our ordinances of smoking tonight.
Exactly. We understand the impact.
But, but the concentration, I sat through a hu, a really big conference on the legalization of marijuana in Denver. And the Denver Chief of Police was there, the building inspector was there, because with all this comes the manufacturing of oils and byproducts and gummies and all that. And, and that all happens. And then there's the black market that happens with dispensaries as well. So the state of Connecticut is in for some change. It might be for the good, it might not be for the good. I'm not here to judge that. I would like, our town, like so many other towns have done, to pull back and say, let's, let's take a breather, let's take a six-month, a sunset clause breather, to say, let's not establish any dispensaries in our town until we know the full impact of this proposal. That's what I'm asking you to consider tonight. That's what Holly had suggested to me, that the town consider.
Has there been any applicant, applications for?
Zoning is looking at a text amendment change tomorrow night. Not an application, but a text amendment to the regulations to allow it. There is someone who would love to open one up in our town, so it's not a moot point.
It might be a good idea to just let people know where the, the only place it could be in town, too. I mean, it can't be within certain parameters, and it has to be a light industrial, so probably, you know, you know, they could not open on Main Street. They could not open in Flanders, Florida. That's not permissible.
It seems that there's two different issues. You've got one, the sale of cannabis and related products. And then you, you have the issue of smoking. Smoke. And not all cannabis products are, do you smoke, right?
Right, right, right.
And, and, I mean, if you can go to a neighboring town and buy a product, and then sit on the park bench in Niatic and smoke it, it's the smoke that I think is really gonna be the concerning factor for, for people that don't particularly enjoy that, that recreational drug, or whatever you wanna call it. But I think that's the concern, that, you know, your rights and freedoms are limited by everyone else's. And it's one thing to take a pill or a gummy and, and go, you know, have, do your thing. And that doesn't affect the person sitting next to you. But if you're smoking cannabis and someone's 10 feet away, they might find it very offensive. So I think that's one of the things that we have to look at and be careful.
And that's another thing I'd like to explore in this period of time. What I'm asking tonight is just to pull back with dispensaries in general. And then kind of look at the law, see the direction CCM is pointing us in, our state legislatures as well. In order to put out an ordinance, this, this, this board puts out a public notice and then has a public hearing. So we can have testimony from both sides or whatever to consider this. This isn't something we rush into tonight. It's something that you would give direction, whether you think it's worth doing or not. And I bring it to you, saying, is this something we want to just let the zoning commission plow into, or is this something that as the town, we do have control, to ask for a moratorium of the establishment of any regulations for a six-month period until the law starts shaking itself out, because we know how these laws are written?
So the moratorium would be for the sale and?
For the dispenser, for the establishment of dispensaries.
And what do we do about the use of the product in public?
That would be a separate ordinance, and then you can, you can also direct me to put out an ordinance about smoke, just non-smoking on our streets, I guess, making it illegal to smoke.
In public.
In public.
So, and I would like clarification for it if it's a, if it's a state sidewalk. Is it only town property?
You show it, so if you have that tonight, or if.
If you have any information on that, at least, because it's a, it's a concern.
Yeah. I would, I would think it'd be worthwhile to have a moratorium written up, approved by town council, and then presented to us for comparison.
Can I remove my masks and my glasses? Don't fog up. I assure you, I've been fully vaccinated. To answer Mr. Salerno's question, under the statute, the town has the authority either through zoning commission or the Board of Selectmen to regulate smoking marijuana or cannabis vaping on any public way. So.
Any public.
Any public way, yes. And, and, or in restaurants outside, you have a lot of leeway, both zoning and the Board of Selectmen, to enact regulations regulating the use of cannabis in the town. And not only in a public way, but at outdoor restaurants or wherever you want to regulate.
That's very good to know. Have any other communities started to look at this?
Yes, and, and you've probably seen in the paper, and the Connecticut Examiner had a very good article yesterday. The statute is a little unusual in that it gives Boards of Selectmen and zoning commissions the ability to regulate the use of cannabis in, within a town. So, and there's three ways to do it. Either the public can do it on a petition before a regular referendum or election, the zoning commission can do it, and the Board of Selectmen can do it. Other towns, you, I don't know if you saw that, Stonington tried to regulate it on a petition, and it went to a referendum, and it failed, and they don't want the selectmen, the townspeople voted not to regulate it. Understand, too, that this statute is also a little unusual, is the uses are allowed as of July 1st unless they're prohibited. So if zoning and the selectmen don't do anything, the uses will be allowed. So I don't.
Well, if we were to do a moratorium, does that regulate the use in, on public ways? Or is it just, would that include that and the sale?
You could do both. You could do both, how, when the town, or you could do a moratorium, in this case, it would be an ordinance, that would be in effect for only six months, or however long the selectmen wanna keep it in effect. And, and many smaller towns are taking that approach. It seems the larger towns are, Middletown is more in favor of allowing it, whereas Middlefield is not. And so you can do, the Board of Selectmen can by ordinance regulate both the use in the town and the establishment of dispensaries, as can the zoning commission.
We could do that with a six-month moratorium.
You could.
With a generator.
You could. And, and rather than a moratorium, we would call it an ordinance banning the use for six months.
So Dan said, go ahead.
Or banning a dispensary for six months.
No, we couldn't ban the use, the use on private property or anything.
No, 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 no.
You know, we can't do that, I know that, but the ordinance would be banning the, you know, opening up a dispensary, but.
And she's, and she's, that also use on?
And you use on a public, because well, I think what we all, you're hearing is, we'd all like to make sure people can't do it in public. I mean, on a sidewalk or something like that. I know Danbury, for instance, I guess they're setting aside a, a public area in a park, which it'll be allowed in a certain area.
Mm-hmm.
I really wouldn't wanna do that. I mean, obviously, if someone's private property, you know, the law's, you know, very specific on that. But we don't want it, obviously, of people walking down Main Street in our parks or on our boardwalk or anyplace like that, you know, so.
Yes. And, and the Board of Selectmen has the authority to regulate the use of cannabis in public, as well as regulating establishments.
Okay. So it's not gonna be someone walking down Main Street that you're gonna consider? But it is someone in, leading one of our late-night establishments. I hate to name, you know, the Irish bar or this bar. But, and stepping out, because they wanna smoke. And they're sitting, they stand on the sidewalk, and they do whatever, and go back into the bar, or restaurant, because you can't smoke inside, of course. So it's not really the guy going out to walk his dog, and that could happen, too. But, you know, we, we force people out of, we force people into the cold in the middle of the winter to go smoke their cigarette, if they're so inclined, and now they'll be able to also light up a doobie. So, and, and that's, that's what you're.
Yeah, and I think, Dan.
It's two different issues.
Dan, you said it really well, that my biggest concern, and it isn't with the edibles. That's not gonna impact people, you know, in the same way as smoke will. So.
I mean, you know, I don't know if you've been in the situation, let's say you're out camping, and the guy in the next campsite lights up a doobie, and, you know, and, and the kids in the way are saying, what the, what's that? You know, and, yeah. And, but that's, you know, some people like it, and some people don't. And, but when it invades a space, then I think there's somewhat of a problem. One question I had is, what is the, if, if a municipality or town was to enact a moratorium, has there been any experience on pushback litigation against those towns?
Not yet.
Not yet?
No. No.
You got proprietor that's got, you know, a fat wallet and wants to try it and we haven't seen.
You know, the statute gives a lot of leeway to municipalities to control it. So I think it would be difficult to have too much pushback. It's clearly within the authority of the town, either through the zoning commission or the board of selectmen in our case, to regulate both dispensaries and use.
The word moratorium always scares me a little bit.
Yes, and it's not, that is, it is not a moratorium. You would have to, or, or this body would have to pass an ordinance to disallow it or regulate it, but it wouldn't be a moratorium. And, and one way to do it would be, if you're looking for a waiting period, is to pass a moratorium, I mean, pass an ordinance for a definite period of time. So an ordinance that wouldn't be in effect for six months, a year. Some towns have done that.
Thank you for explaining.
Sure.
And, and, and point well made, that the legislation on this particular issue about dispensaries coming to Connecticut gave a lot of leeway to the towns, whether they wanted it or not. And if you don't do anything, you get one. If, if there's a, if there's a entrepreneur out there who gets a license and wants to put one in, or as a town leaders, as a board of selectmen, we may ban it. And I just passed around a list of all these towns that are specifically banning it, period. I'm not even suggesting that. I'm suggesting beginning the conversation about that. And in the meantime, putting a, a ban through an ordinance for a sunset period of time, an ordinance that would say it expires in six months. But slow down, let's take a look at what's going on here. Are we the type of town that won't mind this in our town? Or are we the type of town that has a, a different moral compass? Or police issues, or whatever it is, or whatever the reason might be that this, this town decides it might, that it wants it or doesn't want it. I'm suggesting we start that conversation, but in the meantime, put a hold on the allowance of a dispensary coming in for a period of time while we have that discussion as a town.
What about a discussion of the use on public property?
Separate, definitely a separate issue.
Well, she said we could have, I'm.
It's a separate ordinance.
Well, she said, but we could put a moratorium on that.
Well.
Why couldn't we make it an?
We can just make an ordinance that says no public smoking.
Right, but there's a, there's a process we got to go.
Well, what I'd rather do is rather, you know, we already have a sample of what they, what might be read, but we could always ask town council to craft it. I'm sure there's plenty of ordinances being drafted out there now anyway regarding that.
So, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, please. We've been talking enough.
What you have before you is an ordinance that I drafted today that specifically prohibits the establishment of cannabis establishments in the town. I did not include use, but you could certainly include it within this ordinance. And I, there's a six-month period in, within what I drafted today. Certainly you can make it for whatever period you choose.
Tracy, and I don't want to interrupt you, but I think it's a separate ordinance. Because I would think that we're banning smoking not for a six-month period of time, but the sidewalk issue that, that you speak so passionately about, it will be an ongoing issue. We either ban public smoking of anything on sidewalks or any public spaces, and that's not a six-month sunset. That is, here's the new rule. We don't do it in our parks, we don't do it on beaches, we don't do it on our sidewalks.
Well, we gotta, we gotta be careful, we need to understand, because I'm not advocating necessarily for banning smoking cigarettes, but I am more, I would love to have that, right? I have asthma. I have asthma, I, I would. But I'm more, the marijuana smoking in public where it can affect other people, not, and beyond, you know, people don't like smelling, smell the scum.
What goes with the other?
Outside of my personal feelings of use of cannabis, smoking in public, cannabis is here to stay. It's not going away.
Correct.
And my personal view is a six-month ordinance on use until we can figure out what other towns are doing and what we want to do, whether it's a permanent banning or whether it's not. Does it include outdoor seating at private property for a restaurant? There's, there's several areas of outdoor use. And six months allows us to go assess both the dispensing of it and the use of it.
I totally agree.
I just don't think this current, our ordinance that we've been given tonight really addresses the use. I'd like to see something specific to use. I mean, we don't have to do that.
And it makes sense to me to put it in one ordinance, place two, as we walk through the procedural steps for enacting the ordinance and approving the ordinance.
Dan, did you have something?
Well, no, I just, you know, we need, I, I think it would be wise to, to, you know, hit the pause button and give us as a body here, a panel, an opportunity to hear from the people that live in this town. And, because we don't, we may have our, we have our own opinions and, and on this thing. And, but we don't know yet, really, what the folks out there that live in this town think. And we need an opportunity to receive those opinions and assimilate that and before we can make any kind of decision that's long-term. I think a temporary slowing it down a little bit is, is, is probably wise at this point.
And I'll, thank you, and, and, thank you, good point. I'll remind you that we have to have a public hearing before establishing or enacting an ordinance. Am I correct? Tracy?
Yes, you are.
Yeah. So what we'd ask for tonight is for us to go forward with an ordinance, would probably be at our next board of selectmen meeting, and it would be a public hearing where the public can initially come out to talk about even the, the sunset clause here, which is maybe banning dispensaries, maybe not. Maybe public smoking, maybe not. We'll add that in as a subset C.
Yeah, for the, the moratorium is fast, we could do that right now, right? Ordinance is going to take a process.
No, no, we're not, no, no, this is going to be an ordinance. Forget the word moratorium.
Yeah, forget that. It's an ordinance.
We, I use that casually, but it's an ordinance that will expire.
The only way a town can regulate the use of cannabis or dispensaries is via an ordinance.
Got it. Can we add use to this? I mean, do you?
Yes, you can.
Do you have language we could put in for a C?
Sure.
Let's see how quick you are.
And let me, and if I may, can you differentiate smoking versus smoking cannabis? Or no, it's all or nothing?
Yeah, I, I was under the impression that, you know.
You could do both.
You could.
You could do smoking cigarettes in public and you can do smoking cannabis in public.
If someone's at a bar and they want to get outside and have Marlboro, they can, we could still allow that, but they can light up a drink.
Yes, if you wanted to limit this to just smoking cannabis in public spaces, you have the authority to do that, under the statute.
Thank you. So let's add that as a subset C of the use in public spaces, smoking cannabis.
I, let, how Tracy give us the wording on it?
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you. Doing just that.
Can I just take a minute and write it down?
That's what I mean.
Okay.
And, and thank you for all the patience.
And how will this, so if we approve this tonight, how does this impact zoning tomorrow night?
Again, they're talking about a text amendment, so change their regulations, but then assuming our ordinance kicks in before their next zoning meeting or an applicant, an applicant comes forward. Again, so a text amendment is different, as you know, than an actual application. It allows it, but then an ordinance will ban it.
But if they approve it tomorrow night?
They could approve a text amendment tomorrow night, but if our ordinance is, is enacted upon.
Yeah, override.
Then it overrides.
Yeah, that's, because they already, there already is allow for medical dispensaries, right?
Right.
Now, does text amendment require a public hearing as well?
Um, there.
In zoning, yeah.
Yeah, that's tomorrow night. Or is it?
I think it's.
Is it a public hearing?
I think it's on there. Because they already went to planning.
And if it is a public hearing, some of the input that they get, we'll be able to also see.
Yeah.
In addition to what we'll get from our public meeting on the subject.
Oh, yeah, if you would. Thanks, thanks, Anna. Good thinking, Anna. Hi, other Anna.
While we're waiting, I've had the opportunity to attend a, a public event in another state and you smell it all day long.
All day long.
On private property.
On private property.
Gillette Stadium private?
Uh huh. He owns it all.
Yeah, it's on public hearing number two tomorrow night.
All of it.
For a text, text.
And, you know, and it's barred inside the stadium, all smoking, it's barred inside, but.
Because I just, you know, obviously.
People violate ordinances or rules.
We can't ban it if someone's in their own home now or, you know, on their own backyard or something like that.
Are we on the record, so?
Yes.
Yep. Yes.
We're just taking a quick pause.
Thanks for inviting us. This is going downhill.
Okay, well, we're waiting for you to do that. Why don't we move on and do the transfers? We can go back to this, if we want to do that. Because Tracy's writing that, we can go back and.
Is that going to kill your, your minutes?
It just does Anna want me here for that. That's why she.
Yeah.
She'll do the execution.
Yeah. She doesn't do what she loves to do because you already checked.
Yeah, we go grab her, she was just, you want to go grab her real quick? Please, thank you.
She's coming right up.
Close to it.
Yeah, I know. I think we're, we're going to race through the end of this meeting, I'm sure. So the purpose tonight will be to authorize, you have that, right? So what we're going to ask is the, the selectmen authorized for a selectment to negotiate, you know, that's, you have.
We've got it right here.
Then we've got to schedule the public hearing. And now, when we schedule a public hearing, will you have enough time for two weeks from today to have this public hearing?
Yes.
On the 16th? Or the 22nd, I guess? Whatever it is. 20, okay. So we're going to?
Let's take a five-minute recess.
I'm ready.
We're going to take it anyway.
Oh, you're all set.
We've been sitting here since seven.
You're all set, Tracy?
I am all set.
Okay, let's move.
One thing I should remind you.
Yeah. Oh, so you can leave? We're about to do this, we're just going to fly through this, okay? Sorry.
Okay.
I should remind you that the public will also have a say in this ordinance, because the way our charter reads is that the public can petition to overrule the ordinance within 10 days after the publication in the paper. So the public will not only have a say at the public hearing, but it will also have the opportunity to petition to have it rescinded.
Okay.
Okay. It says no one may use smoke in public. Okay.
No one may use or smoke.
Well, use is, you can't take a gummy either. So if the police see someone swallowing a gummy, then they violate the ordinance.
No, police can't do anything because of that state law, you know, would.
No, we, we just got told the town can regulate it. So if it, if it, the ordinance says you can't use or smoke, then the police can take someone into custody, give them a ticket if they swallow a gummy in public. I would think we want, I thought we talked about banning the smoking in public only, not the use.
I wasn't sure how you wanted it to read, so I put use smoking.
You could say use by smoking.
Sure.
Yeah.
So no one may use by smoking in public places?
Or you could say no one can smoke cannabis in public places.
You give it simple.
Yeah, let's just do it in English.
No one can smoke cannabis in public places? Or smoke or use? No one can use or smoke cannabis in public places?
I think we're narrowing it down to only smoke.
Okay, can smoke cannabis in public. Okay, I'll, ordinance prohibiting the establishment of, do you want me to use all the other changes you made here, too?
Uh, yeah, I think it would be helpful. Unless you want me to go over it and then I can give it to Ms. Anderson for the minutes?
Yeah, because I'm not.
Because I can read my writing.
Yeah, you know what you said there more so than I do, because it's, you've got a lot of things there.
I'll read it into the record.
Okay, this will be the motion, then I'll move it after she reads it.
I have a resolution for you.
Okay, you want me to read this before you do yours?
Sure.
Okay, on Wednesday, October 20th. Resolve to authorize the first selectman to execute a notice of public hearing to be held on Wednesday, October 20th at 7:00 PM, October 20, 2021 at 7:00 PM, in the main conference room of the Eastline Town Hall regarding a proposed ordinance entitled, "Ordinance Prohibiting the Establishment of a Cannabis Establishment and Smoking Cannabis in Public Within the Town Limits for a Period of Six Months." The ordinance shall expire six months from the date it becomes effective.
Is that a motion?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
The motion, Anna Sutkin. We've, we've heard a lot tonight. I appreciate you following along. I appreciate Tracy's guidance on this as well. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? I think we have, I don't know if you need to read that into the record. We know what it says and we know where our intentions are, and we're going to publish that and we're going to meet on it. And the public's going to have a, they're going to have a bite, I'm using that a lot tonight, bite of the apple. They're going to have a say and they're going to have an opportunity to let us know how they feel and all that. And I, and I appreciate your, your, your input tonight, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy.
If we last much longer tonight, Anna's just going to stay over and get right back to her desk and work again. So we should let her go home to sleep. So there is a, a special appropriation, no, where are we? Ratified department transfers.
I'll move to, now we can open up for discussion. Move to ratified departmental transfers in the amount of $138,794.80. Process for fiscal year end June 30, 2021, and report to the Board of Finance for approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Great. Let's fly through some.
Five-minute break, please.
Yep. He said.
It'll be less than five minutes.
Okay.
Move for recess?
Move for recess. Well, we'll just, we'll just take that break for a couple of minutes, as quickly as we can. Move for recess, well, we'll just, we'll just take that break for a couple of minutes, as quickly as we can. We're on the record. Session, we have just a couple of things to knock out, ex officio reports. Mr. Siri?
Just real quick, I did Board of Ed, they've had some moisture problems coming through the floor in the, in the library at Haynes. They're going to have to take out all the books, clean them, reseal the floor, put the carpet back down, so they had to authorize $40,000 for that the other night, you know, just something that didn't, you know, you don't want to point... Not blaming anybody but, at all.
Where did they get $40,000?
That, I don't know, but...
Out of their operating budget?
I haven't, that I don't know, but they, they did authorize $40,000 to, because it does need to be remediated, there's no question about that, so, you know, it had to be done, so.
Are you sure?
Huh?
Is the town self-insured?
I, I don't know, that...
Yeah, it'd be flooding though, or rising water, or is that moisture and milk, I don't, I don't think it's insurable.
Okay, but that's just, they have to remediate it, and they've got a plan to do that, so that's all set. And that's it, I'll, it's way late.
But $40,000 just to throw, I don't have two nickels to run together in this building. The light bulb goes out, we go, we go, we'll wait till next year. Anyway, Mr. Cunningham?
Uh, let's see, no, the, just to point out, the, which house, it's, it used to be, that's the Brookside Farm.
Yes.
Has it changed? Brookside Farm is going to have an exhibit coming up, it's going to be called "In the Groove", and I think it's going to be very interesting, it's going to be entertainment recording devices from, you know, early part of the century up to the present, so the old phonographs that you would crank up and then, you know, then later the flat, you know, what were they, 88s or 70s, what were the fast?
Seventy eights.
Seventy eights, seventy eights, and then to the 45s. So, they've got record players up through the years and old radios, and I think it's really going to be an interesting exhibit. So I encourage anyone that's interested in that sort of thing to look for it on the message board, and you might enjoy it.
Great.
Okay.
There you go.
All right, he was unable to attend the last inland wetlands and harbor management meeting, other commitments. But on the building committee, Mark, you were on the last meeting.
I was unable to...
The building committee has approved a path forward based on the unavailability of materials to replace the roof until estimated to be the March timeframe. They approved the installation, design and installation of a secondary barrier inside the IT room. The IT room is not currently leaking, it has in the past, but it didn't leak during the heavy rain following Henri. But they're going to install a secondary barrier, which is basically drip trays that'll flow into the janitor's closet on the floor below to provide an extra barrier of protection of the IT equipment that's going in the room and move forward. They've started inspections by the town fire marshal and the building official, and they're working their way to wrap up the last few items of the project. Once the, once the secondary system is installed, then the town can move forward with the IT installation on a separate contract. And they should be within a, another couple of weeks identifying, one, a date for a certificate of occupancy, and then, two, they actually move in date to trigger the electronic switchover, an IT switchover, and moving the furniture in to support a new home for our fire marshal, emergency management organization, and our police department.
Police dispatch, you got it. Our move-in date is, I think, November 8th, the movers are scheduled, that, that has slipped a few times, but we're getting very close on that, and thank you for that report.
Mark, if I could, is that one thing to that?
Yeah, we got a janitor that needs to leave the building in five minutes.
Two, two meetings ago, they, the building commission completed all of its work for the school, so it is officially closed out. They refinished the floors at Lily Behan's for the gym, and I believe they're complete. Anyway, that's all.
That's cool.
So that's good.
We have a little issue in the assessor's office, you know, Diane, our town assessor had a motorcycle accident. Broke both her legs, she'll be out for months. We're scrambling a little bit, Chris Dixon's in there now. We had just recently hired someone to replace someone who went to another town, and we, there's a situation now where we're going to have to hire somebody else for that position, that didn't work out. So we are down to one person, and that person's also running for a, for an elected position elsewhere in this building. So we're scrambling right now at the assessor's office. We talk about floaters, and we talk about, you know, someone who earns a vacation and then decides to take it, leaves an office unmanned, or at least a desk and a set of tasks unmanned. This town really could use a floater that's, you know, has his or her head on her shoulders, or his shoulders, and they can, you know, multitask a little bit. We really could use that. The efficiency is, it's very difficult. So I'm going to, I'm going to call the meeting to, there's nobody, oh, Ann, you are here, is public comment? Okay, don't want to be rude.
Could we look to get the toxin rec letter on the request on our letter going forward?
It's been done purposefully not to schedule that until we have a clearer idea of what we want to do up there. So we can have that discussion first. But purposefully, through COVID and all that, we decided, let's put a pause on that before we start just giving the land back to them and them establishing on this recreation and that. It's a bigger, it's a bigger picture than was presented tonight, let's put it that way.
Move to adjourn?
I'll move, in a second.
Any opposed to that, or all in favor?
Aye.
All right.